We convene this meeting and I think when we finish, Mr. Jenkins and Mr. Mueller had finished their presentations.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't think so. I think Mr. Mueller intended to call witnesses.
Yes, sir. And according to my notes, we were agreed that Ms. Lawless would be given the opportunity to make a closing statement through her counsel.
No, sir. This is the opportunity for Ms. Lawless, through her attorney, to present whatever evidence she thinks is appropriate.
All right.
So, and I believe the sequence was that when we left, that Ms. Lawless was going to be called as a witness in question by her attorney.
Okay.
Do I have that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about my misrepresentation. Move forward.
Can Ms. Lawless be sworn as a witness?
We hadn't sworn any of the other witnesses. Is there particular statutory authority that we can rely on to swear witnesses?
I can't cite you one now. I just think that it's a proper procedure for the witnesses to be sworn.
Well, if it was proper procedure, it would have been proper procedure for the witnesses who preceded. Are you going to insist on it?
I request it.
Well, in the absence of counsel stating a statutory authority, I am not confident that you have the, you yourself have the authority to swear the witness at the court order. Are you a notary?
I am.
Okay. If you want to swear the witness, that would be fine.
Okay. Would you please, do you sound like you swear the testimony that you're about to give, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, stuff you got?
I do it.
Would you state your full name, spell your last name, please?
Diane, D-I-A-N-E-A, Lawless, L-A-W, F-E-S-S.
Good morning, Ms. Lawless. I'd like to talk a little bit about your educational background as a way of just presenting the board with a little bit of background about who you are.
Okay. Well, I'll start with my, my education. I have a degree in business from Providence College, Bachelor's, Bachelor's Science Degree in Business Administration. I graduated in 1987, I think, '86, '87. And I ran for elected office in 1987. And I became tax collector for the town of Seconk.
Was that your first municipal job?
Yes.
Okay. When was that?
1987.
What was your position there?
Tax collector or town collector.
And what were your duties?
Well, collection of all tax receipts. We did have a trash fee. We had water district tax. It was basically all the tax receipts for the town. Tax title, excise tax, collection of excise tax.
And how long did you do that for?
I was there for eight, nine years. I left there in, I believe, September of 1995.
And what was your next job after that?
I left there to take a position in Taunton in 1995, City of Taunton. It was an appointed position.
Who appointed you?
The Board of the City Council was the appointing body there.
And what did you do there?
I was tax collector for the City of Taunton as well. And I, I was there for approximately eight years. During my tenure there, there was extremely backlog. They were not on, they, the, the office was on software, but the, my previous collector had not established any computerized system for the collection and balancing of the taxes. So, I did that there. And there was a backlog because the tax title then was done on these major, you know, typewriters with the, so, I implemented and computerized, you know, got that established, the procedure to do it online, you know, to do it with a VADA system. And in the course of my tenure there, I collected $3.2 million in delinquent taxes.
When you say tax title, what do you mean by tax title?
Tax title is done after you go through all the collection process. Back then, we were sending annuals on for, for the first part of my tenure there. And once the taxes become due, and you send out a demand bill, which I do within 14 days, and after that, the tax collector can pursue and begin tax-taking, the tax-taking process. My, my method was to send out letters. And the first letter was mild and the second letter was even, you know, a little bit stronger. But, and I finally took title to the property.
And at this, by the time that you ended your tenure at Taunton, had you done any graduate coursework after the undergraduate level or any seminars?
I took a few courses as far as, you know, at Bridgewater State, but I didn't pursue my master's degree. I did, I did pass my G-Mats to do that, but I didn't follow through. But, in the course, I believe I was certified as a tax collector in 198, 1990. You had to be in office for three years as long as you had a Bachelor's degree. You could take the exam. I passed the exam in 1990. I recertified in tax collection in 1995 and again in 2000.
And is that current?
Uh, no. Because I took a leave, I was out of work for, when I left there, I was out for a period of time. And, and, you know, I stayed home with my mom who was pushing an ID at the time, and I took some time off with, in to spend with her. And then I took, well, in the meantime, what was difficult to, when I decided to go back into it again, what was difficult at that time, most of the positions had become combined treasurer collect, treasurer collector positions. So, I had, there was somebody that I knew in the business who said, why don't you come and do some, you know, a little consulting for me? And it was just to basically get me acclimated to some of the treasurer's functions and, you know, because I didn't have any experience on that side. And it's very diff, it's easier to cross over from treasurer collect to treasurer, to be treasurer collector than it is to be collector and then transfer over to treasurer. But, I don't know why, but it is. So, anyway, I did some work for him and he gave me some, you know, a little bit of experience so that I had some knowledge of the treasurer's functions. Although, I will say, at that point, because I had been in, you know, a tax collector for so many years and had taken the courses and certified, and I went out to school every year, just about, and once you were through with your, your collection courses, I was taking treasurer's courses.
And where was that?
That was, it's run by the Mouse Treasurer Association. So, by the time I did become treasurer, I had taken many of the courses that would require to take the treasurer's exam. However, you cannot take the exam until you are a treasurer. So, while I was doing the little consulting for him, there was, it happened to be a newspaper article that my, this treasurer that I was consulting with said, brought to my attention, he said, they have an interim position open. They're looking for somebody to come in and take over because they put somebody on administrative leave for, I don't want to say why, but anyway, they put him on administrative leave and they couldn't terminate him at the time. So, it was a great opportunity for someone like myself, who wasn't working, to go in and get more treasurer's experience. I went in on the interview. I was hired on the spot. What I was told, and I didn't, I took with a grain of salt when I accepted the position, because I didn't know how long I was going to be there, the two people who hired me were the town administrator.
Of what town?
This was East Bridgewater, sorry. The two people that hired me was the town administrator and the fire chief. And I won't go there, but, fire chief.
Okay. So, so you were interim treasurer collector at East Bridgewater, for what years?
I think it was 2005, 2006.
And after that, any, any work after that?
Not till I was offered the position here. I, you know, that's a different number.
And who, who did you interview with here?
I interviewed with the President Board of Selectmen. And I think the, I think the town administrator was there, the town accountant was there, and the, the, my predecessor was there.
Did you eventually take your treasurer's exam?
Yes, I did. I took the treasurer's exam this past August. You had to have at least two years of treasurer's experience. You had to have so many credits for being a municipal officer for X amount of years. You have to have so many points. And I had already taken all the treasurer's courses, I believe several times, before I took the exam. This was my first time of taking the exam. And usually it takes two or three times before someone passes the exam. And I'm very happy to say that I passed it on the first go.
Okay. And who was your predecessor in this position that you currently hold?
Mrs. Anita Howland.
And did you ever meet Ms. Howland?
Yes.
And how did you come to meet her?
Well, I was hired, I believe somewhere between June of '13 and June, June 13, 2013, June 15, and I'm sure it's the exact date.
All right. And did you have any overlap with her?
A little bit. The first week, she was scheduled to take some vacation, so it was only a few hours, I think, the first week, maybe a half a day, a day here. And the following week of maybe a day or two there, but that was it. She retired on June 30.
All right. Did she provide you with any training?
Well, it was a, it was a difficult turn of events because when I first took office here, Mrs. Howland had been working very hard for a long, long time. And it was extremely apparent that she was, a year past when she wanted to retire. And, and she was, you know, she was very stressed, I thought. And she told me at that time that there would, she, she had difficulties with the staff and that she felt that the senior clerk in the office was, did not, was not able to work or did not work to his full capacity.
And who was that?
That was Mr. Santos.
And how did, obviously you came to know him, his professional contributions to the town.
Well, you know, I can't say he, he wasn't a nice man, but it was very obviously, it was obvious to me early on that he had had a set pattern of what was expected of him in the office. And like I said, it didn't take long for me to figure out that he wasn't performing the work that could have been done within the 36-hour period that he was available. And he also wasn't trained to do, you know, more than what he was doing.
Did he have the qualifications to do his job?
I believe so. I remember Mrs. Howland telling me that, you know, his resume, you know, he was a professional. He had had a career. He was retired. And he wanted a, you know, like a job to keep him busy. But, you know, this, being the senior clerk in a treasurer's office is a very stressful, demanding position. And it didn't take long for me to figure out that he could have been taken on more responsibility. Mrs. Howland alluded to me that she felt as though that he was a political appointment. I don't, I don't know that that was true, that I realized that after the fact, but that's how she felt about it. And she was also afraid because of his personality. He was just a little gruff. And she was afraid of his personality. And she said she was always afraid to ask him to do more.
Now, did he meet your needs?
No.
And did you ever have a, ever issue him a warning?
Well, before I, when I say no, let me say, I didn't spend a whole lot of time with him. And again, I only had about three days' training with Mr. Howland. So, it was very stressful. While she was taking, I was, I was appointed, you know, as assistant treasurer. I had no, I had no, she, I had no passcodes to get on her computer to even look at the modules while she was on vacation. I was sitting there basically on my hands for two weeks. And when I did get on the computer, they found that Mrs. Howland's computer had a virus. And I remember someone coming in to take a look at it, not the IT person, but somebody came down, oh, let me look at it, blah, blah, blah. And they said, oh, it's okay, it's okay. And it's, you know, it'll be fine. And finally, I was still having problems, and finally, Mrs. Boucher, the town accountant, came down and she started trying to find things on the computer and do things. And she said, there's something wrong here. And she got really upset. And she went to the selectmen's office and she said, this girl needs to be, to have a computer so that she can start to get acclimated to this job.
Now, why did Ms. Howland not give you the passcodes?
She felt, she felt as though, she felt as though that she, you know, that, that I shouldn't have them. And I-
Did she explain why?
I don't know why. I don't know why. She, she felt as though that that was something that, you know, that if I made a mistake, it was under her passcode. And I remember even sitting there and she wouldn't even let me, like, practice when she was sitting right beside me.
Now, you, did you ever issue a warning to Mr. Santos?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And what was the circumstance of that warning?
Well, there were two letters of reprimand.
Let's go to the second one.
Well, there was an incident where I had asked him, now he did the accounts receivables. And there were three checks that came in that were, like, from individuals. And I was still trying to acclimate, figure out what these checks were for. And I said to him, can you, and I noticed that, you know, he, he wasn't doing payroll. He didn't have any accounts receivables. And I said, can you try to help me in research these checks? And he got really upset with me. And at one point, he got up, he stood, he stood up, he shook his fist in my face and he said to me, this is a career for you, this is a job for me. I had my career and, you know, I had my career. And he got, he got up and he walked out the door, he walked up to the selectmen's office. I was shaking. I was shaking. And he went up there, he told, talked to the town administrator, and then he left. The next day, he called out sick. And Monday was split payroll day. I had never done split payroll in, on this beta, on this system and on Hoppers. I'd never done split payroll, but I was, I felt like he thought he could do that to me and I need, that I needed him. And I was bound and determined that he wasn't going to hold me hostage. So, Monday morning, I wasn't even sure he'd come up Monday morning. And the week, that Friday before, I had called Hoppers and I said, look, I've never done payroll on this system and split payroll is a hind of the system because you have to do calculations for two single years. It's the worst of all the payrolls in the entire year. And anyway, they said to me, if we have to do it for you, we'll do it for you. We'll remote in, we'll guide you through it. Don't worry, we'll get you through this. So, I thought about it on the weekend. I said, I am not going to let this man hold me hostage from doing my job. And so, Monday morning, I came in and I said, Mr. Santos, and when, when I drove into the driveway that day, I was shaking. I, I, I walked into the town hall and I said to him, listen, I said, I'd like you to go sit with the assistant tax collector today. I'm going to do the payroll. I put a sign on my door, I closed the door, and I put, if you need the treasurer, please contact, and they were instructed that, you know, to handle whatever they could, if they could, so that I could get through this payroll. Well, Mrs. Boucher walked in and she saw the sign on, sign on the door. And she knocked on my door and she said, Diane, what's going on? And I, I said, I'm doing payroll. And she looked at me, she goes, you are? And I said, yes, I am. And she knew what had happened. She knew I was really upset. And she said to me, well, do you want me to, she, she said, do you want me to sit with you? And I said, you, do you, will you? And I, I was, you know, you can't imagine what a relief that was to me. Now, she didn't, she didn't, she couldn't touch the keys, but she had enough experience with the years that she'd been there that she had some clue. And between Hoppers being on the phone, she knew how to do the split payroll, how to do that. And she helped me do the split payroll.
Okay. And at some point, did you meet with the town administrator and Mr. Santos?
Yes.
And who was the town administrator at that time?
Richard Brown was the town administrator.
Okay. And what was the, the content of that, that meeting?
Over the weekend, I had written the two, I had written up two letters recommended, as was recommended by him for me to do.
Who recommended?
Richard Brown recommended that I write up the incidents that had occurred. And, and I did. And we didn't have the meeting on Monday because that was payroll. You know, I had a lot of things to do and payroll reports to do. So, we met, I believe, on Wednesday of the following week. And I had brought the letters with me. Mr. Santos was there and Mr. Brown was there. And he said to me, you know, I, he said to me, go ahead and, you know, I said, well, you know, I'm really upset about what happened. And, and anyway, the outcome was, he asked me at that time, he said, well, I'd like to work it, I'd like to try to work it out. And he hadn't even looked at the, if he had, he wouldn't have asked me to work it out if he had read the letters that they put in front of him. And I said, I, I said, I just feel, I said, I am unnerved by what happened. And I didn't feel comfortable being in the same room with him. And I don't think he would have hurt me, but it was like a stress thing. I don't know. But I did say to him, you know, during the meeting, I said, I just don't think you'll be able to handle what I'm going to need from you. I felt like the, what the functions that he was performing, he was doing payroll, which took approximately eight hours a week every other week. And he was doing the accounts receivables, which were done basically two days a week, maybe five, six hours each day. Well, out of 30, that doesn't add up to 36 hours. And what I found in a short time, there were, there were days that Mrs. Boucher was sitting with me at the desk and we were working on the cash book. And the phone was ringing and somebody was at the window. And Mr. Santos wouldn't even get up and service the window.
So, what did Mr. Brown say about your proposed discipline?
Okay. So, at one point, he said to me, after, have to, I said, made that statement about, I don't think it, I don't think you're going to be able to, you know, give me what I need to get the job done in this office. He said, well, you know, and, and he said he wanted to try to work it out. Mr. Brown said, I want you to know, Mr. Santos, that Mrs. Lawless has the support of the Board of the Selectmen in this disciplinary action. At that point, Mr. Santos said, well, okay, I'll resign. The next day, he gave us his letter of recommendation. He took mostly vacation days for the following week or so he had left. And Mr. Santos was gone.
And who else was in your office at that time?
The treasurer, that's all there is in the treasurer's office, is the senior clerk. And there was an assistant collector, Mrs. Dusain, that works in the tax collector's office.
And-
That office is across the hall.
Did you ever have occasion to, did Miss Dusain meet your needs?
Well, again, when I first-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the name.
Christina Dusain. She's the assistant tax collector.
Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. Well, again, nice lady. Mrs. Howland did say to me that Mrs. Dusain needed constant, not supervision, but what's the word I'm looking for? Not supervision, but monitoring or guidance. She is always looking for guidance. And I, it didn't take me long to concur that, you know, she was right, you know? She's, it's not that she's not, it's not that she doesn't try, but she needs help. It's, and what, the way it was explained to me, because I had a conversation about this with Mrs. Boucher, because she was always going up there and asking her questions. And, sorry, Janice Boucher would say, she's always coming up here and asking for questions. Mrs. Howland had the same issues, that she had difficulty maintaining what she was supposed to do on a regular basis. In the course of my experience with her, I, again, I found that that was true. I found that, she, she had told me that she had had a senior helper in there to help her at times when it was busy. She's easily overwhelmed, she's in poor health and has asthma, and she's been there for 20 years. And she's going to retire soon.
And did you ever have any conversations with the Board of Selectmen about issuing her discipline?
Yes, there was, I'll give you the latest incident that transpired. And this is something that transpired many times in the last two years, that there, it, the way that Mrs. Dusain spoke to tax collectors, taxpayers was less than professional. I received many complaints. More often, when Mrs. Estrella was hired, she would say to me, I would be working in the back, trying to concentrate, and she'd say to me, Diane, you need to go over there. Diane, you need to go over there. And what I would do is, I would get up and I would just go stand next to the taxpayer and try to just smooth things out, whatever needed to be, you know, dealt with at the time. But, in the month of January, which was a peak excise tax period, very busy, I received three complaints. I'll mention two of them.
Well, why don't, if you could just characterize the nature of the complaints and then we can get to the discipline, I think is the, the heart of the matter.
Okay. Well, the, the first one was-
Can you summarize the three together?
Well, it was basically, it was basically her, her manner in which she spoke. The term that was used is that she was rude. And, you know, they, they felt as though she wasn't able to handle the job any longer because, you know, of the way she spoke to them.
And, and did you talk to a board member about that?
Yes, I did.
And who did you talk to?
Well, it, it was coincidence that I received a phone call. I didn't speak to this particular person that had made the complaint until he called me. He, I wasn't in the office, I was at a meeting upstairs, when he, this man came in and was unhappy with Christina. unhappy with Christina. And anyway, when I got back to the office, I received a phone call and this gentleman called me and he said, I'm very upset right now. He said, I was in your, I was in the Collector's office and to make a payment and I happened to date the check January 20, January 30th, and it was the 29th of January. And she said, he said, she gave me a real bad time about it. And he said, I've had this experience with her and I don't, I said, I'm not taking it anymore. And I want to, I'm going to speak to the Board of Selectmen. So I said, gee, I'm very sorry. I said, I will address it with, I will address this with Mrs. Hussein. But I couldn't appease him enough. And he says, well, I'm still calling the Board of Selectmen. It just turned out that Mr. Baumgartner and Mr. Sadek came into the town hall that day and I pulled them aside because I did not want them to be blindsided. I wanted to give them advance notice as to this phone call and to let them know that this was coming. Mr. Sadek said to me that I should write her up. And as I said, she's retiring in 2016. And this is not the first time we've had the conversation that I was told to write her up. However, I, you know, it's difficult to do because of, you know, she's going to retire, she's worked for the town for 20 years. All of a sudden, I'm going to write her up and say she can't do the job? Well, Mr. Sadek had said to me at that time that she was never qualified to be an Assistant Tax Collector. And I've heard this from, you know, more than one person, but I know, I know why they did it. It was for signing purposes, it was a part-time collector way back. You need somebody in there to be able to sign an escrow certificate when Tax Collector Treasurer goes on vacation. And I believe that's why they did it.
Now, who replaced Mr. Santos?
Mrs. Estrella was hired on August 26, 2014. 2013, I'm sorry.
2013.
Thank you.
Now, did you select her?
I was at, I was in the interview and we had very few candidates. And Mrs. Estrella made a very good presentation. There was another young lady who also made a very good presentation. But what Mrs. Golds had told me in advance, that she knew Mrs. Estrella, she had worked with her at Cardi's Furniture. And she told me that she was very skillful. And that really, you know, that impressed me, that, you know, she said, I know her, she's, you know, she's a real good worker. So I did have that in the back of my mind when I, when the interview took place. I didn't know the other candidate. And I think there was one other, I think there was another internal candidate also that applied for the job.
But you did not select her, you did not make the decision?
Well, we made it, we made it together. And I remember specifically Mr. Baumgartner saying to me, you know, are you okay with this? And I said, yeah, 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 I think she's nice. I liked both of them, I really did. They were both hired.
I'd like to ask you about a 2009 Powers and Sullivan report, does that ring a bell?
Yes.
What is that report?
Well, it was Mrs. Boucher who brought it to my attention. Obviously, I wasn't there in 2009. And there were things that she thought that needed to be addressed in the Collector Treasurer's office. And she gave me a copy of the letter. And there was a couple of significant things in that letter, one being the closing of the Collector's account.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you just tell us, what is the Powers and Sullivan letter or report?
Sorry. Powers and Sullivan was our outside auditing firm at that time in 2009. And besides doing the financial, providing, verifying the financial balance, finance statements for the town, at the end of that, they issue a letter of recommendation in the way of a management letter. And they make recommendations as to what they feel should be addressed in all of the departments, not just the Treasurer Collector, but all of the finance departments. They make recommendations of what should be done.
And who, do you know who hired Powers and Sullivan or initiated it?
I believe they go up for contract, they go up for bid every so many years. And it's based on a combination of experience and obviously finance.
And what did the report recommend that was relevant to your work as Treasurer Collector?
Well, there was, there was a couple of things that I can remember. I don't have a copy of it in my possession at the moment, but I did have at one time. One of the items that they recommended was to close out the Collector's account, bank account, and close out the Collector's cash book. There were two cash books and there were two computers set up and they weren't networked. Mrs. Howland was posting all of the collection receipts on one computer and a cash book, you know, and entering it into the, and entering it into the cash book program. And she was doing the same thing, entering all the, all the receipts on, you know, the bank, a consulting, a bank statement for the Collector's account and for the Treasurer's account. And I did this for about two months and I said, I can't do this anymore. This is making me crazy to keep, try to keep it straight. So I think that's probably when, you know, Mrs. Boucher said, well, you know, it was recommended. So anyway, she assisted me, we closed it out.
Was that system that you inherited from Miss Howland, was that efficient?
Well, it was what needed to be done because those positions were not combined. They had just been combined, not, I don't know when they combined, maybe somebody else can allude me to that fact. But it was set up that way because it was a separate Collector's position and a Treasurer's position. But once it had been combined, I think maybe it was combined about that time, because that's why they made the recommendation. The positions had been combined at that point. And it would have streamlined the posting of the receipts and it was, it would definitely shorten the timeframe for doing the monthly cash reconciliation of the bank accounts for the town.
So for the combined Treasurer Collector's position, was that system that you inherited from Miss Howland efficient?
No, not as efficient as it could be.
Okay. And did Miss Howland close the Collector's account?
No, I didn't.
And did Miss Howland close the Collector's cash book?
No, I didn't.
And how did you do that?
Well, it took a little bit of work because everything had to be, everything that was in the Collector's account had to be updated. But we did it at a cutoff point. We did it, I think we started as of, we started, well, we did start in August. I felt maybe we started in fiscal year, but I think we started in August, September, somewhere around there. We closed out the bank account. It was in the same bank, so it was no big deal. We just let it sit there idle. And we started putting all the funds in the Treasurer's account. And then, instead of posting, I transferred all the balances from the Collector's cash, from the Collector's cash book account into the Treasurer's cash book account.
Did the Board of Selectmen ever indicate their opinion about this, closing of the accounts and cash books?
No, I did it as a basis of my daily responsibilities and duties as a Treasurer. This was, this was based on the recommendation, the town accountant, the management letter, just part of the everyday duties of the job.
What else did Powers and Sullivan recommend?
They also recommended in 2009 to implement Lockbox, which is the automated payment processing of tax bills.
Okay. Is this on the website or?
No. Years ago, there were independent companies that used to offer this service. And it wasn't even affiliated with the bank years ago. But the, my experience when I came to the town of Taunton is that banks started offering this service in order to get business. And I myself was surprised that there was no monthly fee because in Taunton, I was paying, I had locked, I implemented Lockbox there as well. And I was paying a fee per bill there. So I was shocked to find out that they, so we're not, you're not, there's no feedback. Because I know, I know this is a very financially, what's the word I'm looking for? You know what I'm trying to say? Financially prudent town. And I knew that I was going to have a difficult time getting this approved or accepted if there was money involved in the service. So I was very happy about that, that, you know. And, you know, and I have experience with it, I know how well it works. When I implemented it in Taunton, I expected it to be a lot more, you know, controversy over it. But within, you know, a year, everybody acclimated to it. And it definitely took a great workload off the staff. They were behind in tax title as well. And this allowed me to, you know.
Okay. So what did you do? How did you, how did you take, begin this process in Freetown?
Well, I didn't mention it to the, Mr. Baumgartner and I think Mr. Sadek were at my window one day and I had just found out that, you know, they, I could get the service for basically free, you know, as far as not having to do a line item or anything like that for it. And all I remember, and I know they don't agree with this, but all I remember is Mr. Sadek's concern about a fee. Now, I did hear, I don't necessarily think from them, but I did hear through the grapevine and maybe the previous Town Administrator, that one of the concerns about my implementing Lockbox is that Mrs. Hussein wouldn't have enough to do. And, you know, that's still not the case. But I can't really remember who said that to me. But I knew there was plenty to do and there's plenty that hadn't been done in a long time. And not because people weren't doing the best they could, there's a lot of work to be done in that office. And it's important to stay on top of taking, you know, putting tax, you know, being aggressively assertive in trying to pursue taxes. Not necessarily have to place a lien right away, but if you send out letters saying that, you know, you're delinquent after the demand, every time I issued a letter, some funds would come in. Because I'm the only tax collector in Taunton, so all I could do was send letters. By sending letters saying that I was going to place a lien, I generated a lot of revenue for the city before even going to tax title. So as a result of implementing Lockbox here in Freetown, it took just about 50% of the workload in posting, you know, after physically posting the payments.
It reduced the workload by 50%. Do you know how many hours a month that would save of staff time?
Well, I haven't calculated, you know, staffing hours. There is some work involved to Lockbox. Yeah, you know, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't, the payments just don't come through the year. You have to, you have to upload the file and then it's transmitted electronically via the bank, from the bank, from the Lockbox into our system. A thousand bills takes approximately 15 minutes to post.
Now, what is your recollection of the Board's instructions to you with regard to implementing Lockbox?
I know they don't agree with me, but I didn't feel like they felt it was any that I needed to go before them to get approval to do this. I really didn't, otherwise I wouldn't have.
Now, there's been, talk in testimony about a contract with Lockbox. Did you ever enter into a contract with Lockbox?
Well, I didn't, you know, I, when I had the meeting, I knew how this worked before.
What meeting?
Well, I had a meeting with the bankers. And I know in the June 16th Selectmen's meeting, the banker came with me and she, I asked her to come with me in case there were questions that, you know, I wasn't, you know, up to. And she did. And when, what was I going to say? Let's make sure I thought. Ask me the question again.
Sure. The question is, did you ever enter into a contract with Lockbox?
So I met with, I met with the bankers in, believe it or not, November of 13 about this. And mainly, yes, I had to sign some documents. But my, my understanding when I was signing these documents was to do testing. Because originally, I was going to start off to do, you know, to implement the excise, but they wanted to do testing on everything. And then trying to get this done, I had to sign an agreement. But in the agreement, it says, you can terminate this in 10 days. But basically, at that point, it says that, you know, I was under the impression that they would, they want to take the bills and line everything up and do testing so that when we were ready to go, that we could, we had the option. Because it cost them money. And they said it was more money to do it twice than to do it once, so give me everything we got. So I did.
And how did it go?
It was, well, there was one little glitch, which I felt bad about because it's something I hadn't even discussed with them. Again, having done this in the past, I did not realize that, you know, things had changed. They had, they had Lockbox that had a Boston address. And I didn't realize that at the time. When I did it previously, it wasn't so far out of the region that people really questioned. Actually, I think I had one person question it in the city of Taunton out of 50,000 bills that I sent out.
Okay. So now, I understand you had a board meeting regarding this. Was that the June 16th board meeting?
Well, there was, there was a hearing held before that regarding this issue after I had implemented and was through the first collection of excise tax billing. There was an issue on, I believe, March 30th regarding this Lockbox implementation. The whole, I had been collecting and the bills were coming in for that whole month. But on March 30th, the day before, I think it was a Friday, the bills would do, I think, on the following Monday, and an issue arose.
Okay. So we'll get to that later, but eventually the board voted for, to approve Lockbox.
Yes, they did. But there's things that happened prior to that. It was addressed at the first hearing. And after the first hearing, I left documents for Richard Brown, I left a packet. I don't know if I did it that day. I know I had paperwork with me, but I, but I don't know if I left that for him that day. But I definitely know I went back and I gave him a packet for all three of the Selectmen to review. And what gets better is that prior to my going, sending, you know, getting ready to send out the first issue of real estate bills, I went to Mr. Brown again. And I said to him, do I need to go before the Selectmen again to review this issue? Because I was nervous about it. And he said to me, I said, are they on board with me doing the real estate and the personal property bills? Oh, yeah, 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 they're on board, they're on board, is what he told me.
Doing that through Lockbox.
Yes, doing that through Lockbox. I don't know what happened, what made me. I was going before the Board of Selectmen to discuss Chapter 32B, Section 18, in the following meeting. And I remember calling Ally and I said, you know what? Can you put me on the agenda for Lockbox? I said, even if it's so, like, you know, to talk about it and see how everybody likes it and kind of give people the heads up that this was coming. So that was, that had to be done before the agenda. I don't know how in advance, but she told me there was a deadline. She said, well, do it, put me on the agenda. The day of the meeting- The day of the meeting, Mr. Baumgartner, I, I don't know about you, if you were there, but I know, I know that I saw the selectmen, one or both of them go into the assessor's office, and something made me go in there and ask them what they were looking for, what they were asking about, and it was at that time which she told me that they wanted to know if the bills had been printed. And what we do is, this was, this was just before the 16th, this was like the first week of June, first second week of June, and we had sent a file to the printing company. And we had made the file up with the scanline on it, but what we do is we, we take a sampling of all the different residential codes, building, commercial codes, all the different codes that are involved, and all the, and commercial rates and everything, or every possible scenario. I have, I had Christina go through, she does it for me every year, goes through all the codes and, and gets a sampling of, tried to anyway, of every single possible variation of the kind of bill that we're gonna use. They send 50 bills, we go through them, I give a stack to the assessor's office, I insist on it, they don't wanna do that for us, but she came around and did it for me because the information that's on that bill is also information about the assessor's office. So I want as many eyes on that bill, because it's important that it's accurate, to be looking at the bill and make sure that they're on board, especially the assessor's office, the collector, myself, the clerks, anybody who's willing to look at it, I have approved that bill. Well, so we had a scanline already on the bill.
What's a scanline?
That's a scanline that you need for lockbox. It's very much like the UP, UC barcodes that came about somewhere in the 80s when they started scanning, putting scanlines on everything you buy. They don't key in the amount, they scan it, and this is virtually the same thing. All of the information is encrypted on the bottom of the bill, the issue date, the amount of the bill, whatever, all they, they're counting up on the bill, everything is on there. So that when they, when, when they receive that, you know, when it's locked up, they can, so we have that tested too, to make sure the scanline works before we actually do a run of the tax bill, okay? So anyway, this was done the following week before I was going, going to the board's selectmen, I believe it's June 16th, to address the selectmen on chapter 32B, section 18, and subsequently talk about the, the production and issuance of the tax bill. Well, we went through the Medicare Part B, chapter 32, chapter 32, section 18, Part B, fine, there was no glitch, we talked about how that came about and what we were doing with that, and they were happy with my, you know, how, you know, I told them how it was gonna cost and what we saved and all that kind of thing, and that went fine. When the subject of the tax bills came up, fireworks, and they were all surprised that I was running, gonna run real estate and personal property bills. And, and Mr. Sadik was under the impression that I had already run the bills because, you know, she had received samples. But the, the, the important part here is that I don't know why Mr. Sadik would have asked the assistant assessor if I, if the bills were printed, when the tax collector is the one who prints the bills, is responsible for printing, printing the bills. Why wouldn't you ask me? I don't know.
So you had not printed the bills at that point?
Uh-uh.
No?
Nope.
Okay. And was it at that meeting that the board approved lockbox?
Yes. There was some little bit of tension and going back and forth about, you know, you know, Lisa was in the dark, she, she wasn't aware that I was doing this, everybody felt, felt like they were in the dark that I was doing this without their permission. At one point, things got so hot that Mrs. Pacheco said to Mr. Sadik, please keep the personnelies out of this.
So since
I have, I have video.
Sir, you shouldn't, you shouldn't say anything, just
I have video.
Let's not cross talk. So since then, has the town accepted, the town's citizens accepted lockbox?
Yes, yes, you know, it's running really smoothly, runs really, really smoothly.
I'd like to ask you about, were there any other recommendations in the Powers and Sullivan report that you implemented? I'm sorry, before I get to that, one last question about lockbox. Obviously, Ms. Howland had not implemented lockbox.
Right.
Okay, so another question about the Powers and Sullivan report, what was the, any other recommendations that you implemented from the Powers and Sullivan report?
I can't remember now, if I did, I don't remember.
Well, you mentioned 32B.
That was not as a result of the management report from Powers and Sullivan. That was as a result of an ordinance that had been accepted at town meeting in 2008, and that, that ordinance was part of our insurance, healthcare, not plan, but our healthcare process, and the chapter 32B, section 18 requires that employees, retirees who reach the age of 65 are required to transfer from the town's active health insurance plan to the town's supplemental plan.
And was it your understanding that the ordinance passed in 2008 required implementation of it at that time?
Well, there was a lot, a lot going on as far as the state, you know, whether, whether, the state, I don't think had totally, you know, had, had established policy procedures. There was a lot of changes in the course of time, but it, because of the fact that it was implemented at that time, adopted at that time and not implemented, the ordinance itself puts the onus on the town to pay the penalties of any retirees who the town did not require to apply for Medicare Part B, to reimburse these employees the amount of the penalty that they had been assessed.
How long had town retirees been penalized in this way?
Well, there, there, there was approximately anywhere from 10 to 20. It's varied, it varied when they turned 65, it varied when they retired. So that required a lot of research as to determine who should have been, who, you know, who needed to be. At one time, when you worked for municipality, you weren't entitled to Medicare Part B. Somewhere along the way, they changed the, they changed the requirement so you could piggyback on a spouse, if you had been married for 10 years and, and divorced, you could still piggyback on your, on the town, on your husband's, you know, social security benefit or whatever, and be eligible for Part B. So those were changes that were made along the way, but they were approximately, you know, 10, 15 people, but everybody's date was different, the penalty, some were 220%.
And could this, implementing 32B, could that have been done before you arrived as treasurer collector?
Well, it should have been, at the very least, looked into, but as I said, there were many, many, many variations there, but it should have been attempted because the amount of the penalties for each year, those people who were eligible, every year a 10% that they didn't apply and should have applied, but every year there's a 10% penalty for each year that they didn't apply from the time they turned 65. So I had some that, that the highest was 220, some with 10%, some with 20%.
So how many, what, how much in penalties did Freetown pay over the course of the years?
Well
Before you went, you know, implemented 32B?
Well, you know, it's a guesstimate because I don't know what the health, I, I, it's a, I don't know what the health insurance plans were at that time, but just taking an average cost of the plans from less than what they are now, take an average cost and calculating that out, it's anywhere, anywhere between 75 and $200,000. It would have, you'd have to know all the rates and what policy plans they were on and all that sort of thing, but it definitely cost the taxpayers additional premiums in health insurance for not having implemented, whether they could have or not, whether the problems were in that system, they put the onus on the town, which I don't particularly thought was, think was fear. We went through all kinds of hearing processes to try to eliminate, you know, that, but to no avail. We ended up paying 1200, we're paying right now $1,200 a month on reimbursement process for the employees.
Any estimate of how much the town is saving now that 32B has been implemented?
At this point in time, it's approximately $25,000 a year. That's what I, that's what I estimated anyway.
I'd like to talk about tax title. When you arrived, what was the state of the delinquent taxes in this town?
Well, in 2013, tax title had been, the tax title itself had been done for 11, but not all of them, and I'm sure Mrs. Howland had reasons for not doing it, there might have been issues that she didn't take certain parcels, but more importantly, the subsequent tax titles were not done in 2011, and the subsequent are supposed to be done prior to the taking itself. So those weren't done, and 2012 was not done at all.
By subsequent, you mean 2012?
Subsequent 2012 and 12. I mean, you have a certain amount of time to do this, I mean, you have a two-year period to, to do this, but the, the sooner you implement this process and you issue, you issue delinquent letters, the more revenue you are, you know, you receive. Every time I sent a letter out, I got a good response, I received, you know, we received revenue prior to actually doing the tax taking. By, by the, by the, by the end of last year maybe, between then and now, we're up to date, 2004, 2014 rather, is in tax title. Subsequent, everything, everything's up to date, nothing else can be taken until the 2015 becomes delinquent.
And how far back do these delinquencies go?
Well, well, you know, you're talking, I, I think what you're referring to is what years are in tax title. The tax title outstanding goes back to 1965.
And how much have you been able to collect so far in tax title?
Well, the last time I was able to look at the figures, from July of last year to, you know, before I was put on administrative leave, there was approximately a quarter of a million dollars in both interest and taxes that were collected, but there's still two and a half million out there to be collected, interest and tax to be collected.
Have you ever dealt with abandoned property?
Yes, that was something, there was a, again, I think Janice gave me a copy of this, it was, I think, a review done by the Department of Revenue. It was a management review, they, I think, I think the town was, sometimes towns have this come in to see, you know, do we need more people, are we running things efficiently? I think they may have been thinking about combining the position or a already had at that time, and the, one of the recommendations made in that management review was to reduce the amount of abandoned property in the vendor and payroll accounts. And they made, they made a statement in that account that in fiscal 2004 and 2005, something like that, between 2004, 2006, the abandoned property account had increased from $25,000 to $30,000 in that, in those accounts. And what they, what, what that specifically referred to was outstanding payroll and vendor checks that were old, I mean, not a year old, maybe two years old, that a procedure, there's a procedure that you have to follow to, to send out letters to people to try to get them to tell you if they, they're owed this money or to resolve that issue. But in the report, it said it had increased from 2005, 2006, and in 2009, when they made the assessment, it was still 230, 25, $30,000, and they made a recommendation that an effort be made to reduce that amount, because in doing so, anyone who didn't claim this abandoned check, those revenues can, would then be, would turned over to, would be able to be turned over back into the general fund. When I took office in 13, there was still $30,000 in the, in old checks that was in both the revenue and the payroll account. And we did, while I was there, we made effort, we made a, a great effort to reduce that balance, that payroll and vendor balance.
And then what about uncollected receivables?
Well, we had lots of those. Again, Janice brought this to my attention. Janice was the town accountant for a few years, and this is the first place, the first town that I worked in, that the town accountant did the balancing for the tax collection. She ran the reports every month for the tax office. And what she said to me was, do you think you can, and when you get a chance, can you please work on reducing the amount of uncollected receivables on the books? And what I mean by that is there was 30 years of, of receivables on the books, let's say excise vote, personal property, that's what she was referring to, not so, not so much real estate, because that had already been taken care of, but it, it was a reconciliation process that she'd have to make a stack of reports every time, every time she balanced those books. So again, this, this doesn't actually generate revenue, but it would make her job easier, that should have been my job, but she was doing it. So between the tax collector's office and the assessor's office, it took a lot of work on the assessor's office to do this, because we had to, we had to, we had to go through every single outstanding bill, and we had to, we had to list every, every outstanding bill, we had to turn it over to the assessor and request, request that it be abated, they don't really call it that, but it's a 58A, and you have to say why you think it's uncollectible and, and whatnot. Anyway, we worked, we worked diligently to reduce it. It's not all done, but we've taken about 25, 30 years off of each receivable. The recommendation usually from an auditing firm is not to have more than seven years of outstanding receivables in any one entity on your books. It may vary from auditor to auditor. At first, the assessors, the assistant assessor said, well, you know, we could still collect that excise, and that is very true. We have a flagging system that was implemented years ago with the state. If, once the, once the excise tax goes beyond the man, it's placed on warrant, and after a period of time, if they, if the, if the taxpayer doesn't pay their excise, it's flagged with the registry of motor vehicles. They, they can, if they, if they have a warrant and they are stopped for any reason whatsoever, their vehicle can be impounded, so it's a strong, it's a strong, that was a good thing for us, because even somebody leaves the state, we have reciprocal agreements now across country, that if there's outstanding receivables here in Mass, and somebody moves to Florida, they're not gonna be able to get their license renewed in Florida unless they pay years of excise, anyway.
Okay.
Where was I going with that, I don't know.
All right, so I got a question about, about, you implemented lockbox, you closed the collector's bank account and collector's books, you got uncollected receivables off of the, the books, what impact did this have on the What impact did this have on the demands on your, you and your staff in your office?
Well, the lockbox definitely made a big difference. Closing the collector's account made a big difference for me because it reduced the, the time to reconcile the cat, that cash every month a great deal. And it made Janice happy because it made her job a lot easier as well.
Did it have an impact on the efficiency of your office?
I believe it did. We wouldn't have been able to do the, to, to implement these things had we not streamlined the, the receipt process, the collection process. Those, the chapter thirty-two B took a lot, you know, was a lot of work. The abandoned property is a lot of work. You're sending letters out to all these people that have checks outstanding. We had checks outstanding back to two thousand and nine. When I took office, I have a, I have a memory of one vendor, just a vendor account alone, that the checks that were outstanding from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twelve, where that, just one account alone was thirty thousand dollars outstanding in old checks.
Now, I understand that you had a, an executive session board meeting in April of two thousand and fourteen. Is that correct?
A board meeting?
Well, a board of selectmen meeting. Did you have a meeting in executive session with the board of selectmen?
Well, it was, I was close to a hearing.
Okay. I'm showing you a, a letter that's dated April second of two thousand and fourteen. Who, who sent you that letter?
Mitch Brown.
Okay. And he was the town administrator at the town?
Yes.
And was this the notice for that executive session meeting?
Yes.
Or would you call it a hearing?
Yes, well, that's what he said.
He called it a hearing?
He called it a hearing.
All right. And on that document that you see, were there any specific topics listed?
Well, it just says he had to discuss the complaints against an employee and possible discipline. But what he said to me was, and I don't know how the two related, but he said, and I don't, I'm not familiar with how these things are, you know, implemented or done, so. But he said to me, the, the selectman, I'm not happy that you implemented lockbox. That's what he said to me.
Any other, any topics on this notice, this April second notice?
No.
I introduced this as an exhibit. Do you want to continue the numbering?
Whatever's best for you.
Okay, what number are we at, do you know?
You asked me the hard question. I have it here. I believe this would be exhibit fifteen, am I right?
Yes.
Could I ask if anybody would like the air conditioning put on here to refresh the air? Any objection with that?
Yes.
Take a minute?
Yeah, it'd be great.
If this creates an problem to you.
Noise you need?
Yeah.
I'll let you know.
You seem like the kind of person who would like that. Have you made copies of any of the exhibits?
I, I have, I don't have many exhibits. I don't have a copy of that.
Would you like me to make that? Well, the reason I, I asked, well, actually was if there are others that you don't have copies of, maybe we should do that all at once.
Let me see, let me see how it goes.
Well, I'm, I'm asking you, if there are other exhibits that you're going to produce, if we don't have copies of those, let's do it now. Yeah, how about, sure, you know, there's a, there's a lot of paperwork in a situation like this.
Would you like to take a brief recess to catch up?
No, I think that, I think that what makes the most sense is, I think I have copies of most of the things, and I'm not exactly sure if I'm going to get into all the exhibits, so I don't want to make copies of the things that I, you know, I'm not going to introduce.
Well, good. Let's take a five-minute break, okay? You can, you know, make a copy of this. Okay, let's take, size, three sizes, six copies.
Okay, let's move back into session.
While we're dealing with exhibits, there's a few matters that I'd like to address regarding the exhibits that the town has introduced. I would like to lodge an objection to exhibit eight and exhibit nine. Exhibit ten and exhibit eleven, those are rank hearsay and have no place in this hearing and this adjudication. I understand that the rules of evidence are, are loose in this proceeding. due process requires that the evidence that's submitted to this board be somewhat, at least somewhat competent, and at least credible, and at least probative of the truth that you are trying to ascertain. And the problem with exhibits eight, nine, ten, and eleven is that, especially for the witnesses who could have come in, that the town could have called Ms. Cheryl Estrella, Ms. Dusain in particular. Those witnesses are in the town's control, obviously. They could have testified. And either the town has chosen to strategically exclude them from this hearing or the witnesses themselves refuse to testify. In either case, I'm unable to cross-examine them. In the case of exhibit eight, I'm unable to cross-examine Mr. Sadek, of course. And that is a, creates a fundamentally unfair situation for Ms. Wallace. It is simply too easy for someone to exaggerate the truth or lie in written testimony in the purpose of cross-examining it. And the reason why it's a fundamental part of due process rights is that it's the, the only way to ensure getting at the truth in this matter. So I would ask the chair to exclude exhibits eight, nine, ten, and eleven from the evidence that you consider in this case.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah. Kind of an odd sequence that we would be taking here of this in the middle of the witnesses' testimony. But that aside, if we are going to apply rules of hearsay, Ms. Wallace's testimony to this point would have consumed approximately ten minutes. Ms. Wallace has herself engaged in what her counsel would call rank hearsay. I believe that now is not the time. To raise an objection like that, I believe Ms. Wallace should be allowed to say whatever it is that she wants to say to you. And that both sides have not applied a hearsay standard to this proceeding. You'll also recall that at the time that we were trying to accommodate Ms. Wallace and her counsel for the hearing, she asked for approximately, almost a four-week delay in the hearing process. And as part of that back and forth, you recall that I suggested to the board that he instruct me to cooperate with, with counsel in the presentation of evidence to you. And frankly, I was expecting that there would have been requests from the other side, either for documents or for witnesses. This is an attempt to set you up for a due process case. I think that you have complied with due process. The other side has asked for no documents in advance of the hearing. And counsel knows that the respondent in a case like this has the same opportunity to subpoena witnesses as the town does. The notice that went to Ms. Wallace informing her of this hearing specifically identified the employees who had an issue with her. No attempt was made through counsel to interview those witnesses, which we would have allowed. And no attempt was made to subpoena those witnesses. So my suggestion to you is that you satisfy due process and that you should allow the evidence that's already been introduced and allow the evidence that Ms. Wallace intends to introduce.
Based on our legal counsel's advice, I'm going to allow these exhibits and this evidence.
Now, Ms. Wallace, you mentioned a, issuing a written warning to Mr. Santos.
Yep.
Is this that, those two written warnings?
Yes, I did remember that before.
I submit this as, um, is it sixteen now? And you mentioned issuing discipline to Mr. Sane?
Well, I, I disciplined her. I, I documented. Because I had gone to the selectmen about this issue, I documented and I spoke to her about it. I, I noted what, what I overheard her say to one, one taxpayer. I was sitting at my desk, it was almost four o'clock. So it's quiet in there, and I heard what she said. And I went over there. But the other one is the, I documented the incident that I received a phone call on, documented the person's name, the date that he was in, what his complaint was. And I spoke, before I went to speak to Mr. Baumgartner and to, to Mr. Sadek, I, I let her know that I had to do this because I didn't want them to be blindsided by, you know, this phone call. And again, I really, really tried to alleviate him doing that. I don't know if he ever did, I don't know if it worked. But that's the reason why, you know, I put this, I documented, I just did it for. But no, I didn't have her sign anything. I said to her before, she's in poor health, but I, I felt as though I had to dress it with her, and I did. And I told her that I was speaking to the selectmen about it and to the chairman and the director. Just may have requested them to make a phone call.
okay, I'd like to ask you about the April two thousand and fourteen board of selectmen meeting or hearing that was conducted in executive session. You testified earlier that you were told that this was to address lockbox. What, were other topics discussed at that hearing?
Yes, many.
And were, did you ever receive notice of those topics? I'd like to direct your attention to exhibit seven in this proceeding. it's the last two pages of exhibit seven. It's the April twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen letter from Chairman Pacheco to you. Do you see the bullet points? The first bullet point says that your work hours are to be consistent with the regular hours that town hall is open. Did the board discuss this with you at the April fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen?
Yeah.
Meeting? And had you received notice that this would be discussed at that meeting?
No.
Were you given an opportunity to call any witnesses at that, that meeting?
No.
And were you given the opportunity to cross-examine any witnesses at that meeting?
There were no witnesses.
No witnesses testified? No? Is that a no? Is that a no?
No, that's non-sent.
And did you receive any documentation of any of these allegations at the April 15, 2014 hearing?
No.
All right. But you agree that your hours of work were discussed at this hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Yes.
Now, what was your understanding of your... any restrictions on your ability to work here at the Town Hall?
Well, I know I'm expected to work from eight to four. What I didn't know is that I wasn't allowed to leave the building until eight and four, unless I took vacation, personal time, or comp time. And I knew I didn't have compensatory time in my contract. However, when I first took the position and Mr. Santos left, I was from, let's say, let's say, at least six weeks I was on my own to run both... do the cook's job and learn my job and learn both jobs. And I was putting in some substantial hours to keep everything above work. And at one point, I said to Mr. Sadik, I said, "I look, I know I don't have compensatory time." I said, "But could I take some of these hours?" I had worked in, let's say, the first three months. I believe I put in additional three or four weeks of hours, you know, in that period of time. I was going in Saturdays, Sundays. What have I had to do but keep up both sides? And I said to him, "Would you mind?" He says, "Yeah." And he says, "But I don't want you to put on your timesheet, but if you need time to go here, there, you know, for an appointment, don't write it down, but do it." And that's what my understanding was.
Now, how often did you work after work hours or before work hours or on weekends?
The first few months and when Mrs. Estrella was hired, because I was trading her, got two additional hours. So, let's say for the first three months anyway, I was working an additional fifteen hours a week, you know, for that period of time.
What about after the initial period?
I consistently worked in addition to thirty-six hours a week. Not every week, but consistently, consistently. I think I determined last year for fiscal fourteen, I had put in approximately a hundred and at least a hundred and fifty-one additional hours.
And were you expecting comp time for all of that, all of those hours?
No. I have never been additionally compensated monetarily for any of those hours. And even of the hundred and fifty-one, I probably used maybe twenty of those hours as comp time.
And why did you work those additional hours?
Because I loved my job. There was a lot to do. There was a lot to do. There was a lot to be caught up on. And a lot I needed to, you know, learn. There's no question about that. And while I'm trying to learn my job, I was trying to teach a new senior for her job, what I had learned as far as the accounts receivables and the payroll. And again, the town accountant had alluded to me that she wanted... she wanted me to... us to start auditing the health insurance and the life insurance and all this stuff, which was a lot of work. And it had not been done for a long time. And I'm not faulting Mrs. Howland for not being able to do this. I believe she worked as hard as she could. I don't believe she had the help that she needed to do this. I really don't. This was... this is a lot of work, just to... every single... just auditing the bills that can be payable for the treasurer's office when it comes to life insurance and health insurance alone, and managing the... and managing the union deductions and the retirement deduction alone. It's not just about entering payroll. It's about making sure those retirement deductions that are being taken are correct, about everything being coded correctly. As far as the health insurance is concerned, every single month, we go line by line and compare what the... what Maya was charging us and what we have deducted from the employee's payroll to make sure that everything is agreement. That one bill alone takes approximately two to four hours a month to reconcile, to make sure that that's paid right. That wasn't being done. She didn't have the time to do it. As a result of doing that, Mrs. Estrella did a lot of research with regard to that fact. We had, as far as the life insurance was concerned, we were paying for people who had no... were no longer employed by the time they were deceased. And we got some credits back as a result of doing that. What was your legal question?
Okay. Now, the third bullet point on that letter says that if you're planning on being absent from work, you need to notify the Board of Selectment through the Town Administrator. Was that discussed at this April 15 meeting?
Yes.
And did you receive notice that this would be discussed at the April 15 meeting?
No.
And did you hear any witness testimony about this?
No.
And were you able to cross-examine any witnesses about this allegation?
No.
Now, the next bullet point says that vacations should be scheduled in advance with the approval of the Board of Selectment. Do you see that?
Yes.
What was discussed at the April 15 meeting regarding that?
I can't really say. I can't really say I remember, but I... can't really say I remembered anything specifically. I had always notified the Board of Selectment when I was intending on taking a vacation. I never felt like I, you know, I might have forgotten the day or here that I was going to leave early or think that I emailed Ally as what's going to come up later on, but I think I was pretty vigilant. I had very... I had a lot of difficulty taking a vacation because when I took a vacation, I had to work double time when I came back. Nobody performs the duty of the treasurer in the treasurer's office when that person is absent because there's no assistant treasurer. So, I feel as though I notified them in advance.
The next bullet point says that "any alterations to the manner in which the town business is conducted or changes in town policies relative to the treasurer-collector's office should be approved." You don't disagree with that, do you?
No, I don't. However, there are certain duties and obligations that are just within normal practice of the treasurer-collector's office that shouldn't require the approval and sometimes in some instances would be deemed a conflict of interest to request approval. There needs to be some autonomy there.
Give me example.
Well, I believe with respect to at least opening a bank account, that there should be some anonymity. I'm not saying... I don't mind answering questions, but I believe in, you know, in trying to explain my reason for doing something, but to initially have to get permission to do that or, you know, I don't feel as though is necessary under the Chapter Third of Forty-One. That's definitely under the purview of the responsibility of the treasurer-collector to do so. As far as making changes within the, you know, simple procedures in the office, which I did do, you know, with respect to when I first became employed and realized that the tax office was depositing the... making the daily deposit, out entering the payments and balancing the payments against the deposit, I stopped that immediately, and it was not well received. But I felt as though it was important with respect to maintaining a proper audit trail. It's impossible to find an error. If something was misposted and somebody posted a partial payment of five hundred dollars or a payment of full... a full payment of the tax and the person had made a partial payment and the person failed to note that, and the check was already in the bank or the cash was already in the bank, you had nothing to look at, and that's what they were doing, and that had changed immediately.
And the next bullet point says that "discussions with citizens and fellow employees should be in a courteous and professional manner."
Well, there was this case where I went to see the assessor, and I was looking for information with regard to balancing the tax. And I was asking about the charity sheet. I had questions about the charity sheet. She didn't understand me, and I didn't understand her pleasure. And, you know, we got into a little disagreement. I didn't think it was a big thing, but somehow they got turned into a big thing. Since that point, I mean, we, you know, you know, why, you know, why... I have no problems with the assistant assessor. She has gone... she has gone beyond involved to try to accommodate me in getting the bills out and in, I think, in the best interest of the town. She's done so.
All right. The next bullet point says, "As discussed, your husband and any other personal visitor should not be permitted to enter your office or area at any time." Did you receive notice that this would be discussed at this meeting, at the April 15 meeting?
I don't believe it was discussed that was going to be addressed at the meeting. I received an email, a really disturbing email from the Town Administrator, and he sent it to my email when I was on vacation stating to me that various employees... I don't know where, but I got a copy here somewhere. Various employees had seen my husband and myself. Here it is. I'll read it. It was reported to me from various employees that your husb...
Could you give us the date on that, Sam?
It was...
Just identifying.
...March fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen.
What... I guess what I'd like to know is, what did you... my question was, at this hearing, did you receive... prior to this hearing, did you receive notice that this would be discussed?
No.
Okay. And did you... in the course of this April 15 hearing, did you see any witnesses discuss... give any testimony about this?
No.
And were you given an opportunity to cross-examine anyone, any witness regarding this issue at the April 15 meeting?
No.
Are you aware of any instance where your husband has entered your office in the course of your work?
Yes.
Okay. And how many occasions does that happen?
Well, I would say five or six times. We were without a vehicle, so he was driving me and picking me up. And there was occasions where at the end of the day, it'd be, you know, mid-past or four o'clock, he'd come in, and I was never ready to go. I always wanted to do one more thing, so he sat and waited for me to do my one more thing.
And did you... on any of those occasions, did you ever show him any town documents?
Absolutely not.
Did you ever show him your computer screen?
No, absolutely not.
Did you ever meet... there's been allegations about a meeting with bankers. Did you ever meet with bankers and Mr... and your husband, Mr. Wallace, at any time on town property?
Absolutely, absolutely not. But there was an introduction because he came in one day to drop off my cellphone.
Who?
My husband.
Okay.
And I had an appointment with a banker at two-thirty.
Do you remember when this was?
Yes. I think it was March fifth, two thousand and fourteen, I believe. I'm not a hundred percent, but... because I got a thank you letter from the banker the day after thanking me for taking my time, and I hope I didn't make you stay too late. That's how I'm coming up with that date. Yes. So, I had an appointment with one banker at, let's say, two-thirty or two o'clock. A banker showed up unannounced at one o'clock, as they often do, and approximately two o'clock, my appointment showed up. My husband walked into the Town Hall, and one banker was leaving because I had an appointment with the other, again, two different banks. I exchanged niceties. I introduced him who they were. My husband left, the first banker left, and I had my meeting in my office with the banker I had the appointment with.
Was Mr. Wallace in that meeting?
No, he had already gone.
Did Mr. Wallace discuss any substance of the town's business with a banker?
Absolutely not.
From this point forward, March fifth of two thousand and fourteen to this very moment today, are you aware of the town investigating your husband's involvement in town business?
No.
Have any law enforcement authorities contacted you about your husband's involvement in town business?
No, absolutely not.
I'd like to direct your attention to Exhibit Eight, the first page. It's hard for me to tell, but as best I can tell, I believe this is a letter from Selectman Sadik to Administrator Healy. We have not received testimony about this exhibit, so that is only my best reminder. So, I will assume that it's Mr. Sadik's letter. The first topic on Exhibit Eight talks about improper guidance to the Board of Selectmen. Do you recall a meeting with the Board of Selectmen on December first of two thousand and fourteen?
Regarding this issue?
Yes.
No.
Do you regard... do you recall the issue? Do you ever recall?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Did you speak with Mr. Sadik about it?
I don't recall if I did or not.
Has Mr. Sadik ever approached you to discuss this matter?
I don't know. I really don't know.
And prior to this hearing...
I did... yeah, I didn't... if I didn't speak to him, I know I did have a conversation with the Town Administrator about it. I know I did, yeah.
But do you recall any discussions with any board members, selectmen?
No.
And prior to this hearing, did you have any notice that this would be evidence presented at this hearing?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Now, do you recall Grandpa's Place and Main Street Auto having back taxes due?
Absolutely.
And what steps did you take to rectify the situation?
Well, basically, it's the same thing we do every year. The administrative assistant works like my request for me to give them notification of anybody who has any outstanding taxes that are due to the town. If they're on a payment plan, are they... if there are outstanding taxes that are older than a year, have... if I made a payment plan, are they... comment with the payment plan, of that nature.
Okay. And do you recall giving any testimony to the Board of Selectmen about this issue?
Testimony, how?
Do you remember talking to the Board of Selectmen in a public meeting about this issue?
No. I don't, but I don't.
All right. Well, Mr. Sadik, in this letter accuses you of misleading the Board of Selectmen.
Well, you know, they... we did think that what happened was is... and maybe I can explain it by reading what I wrote. Maybe I can explain why they feel like I misled them. It will probably clarify. Christina usually has handled the payment plans, and really, it's a treasurer's function function, but she's been doing it willingly. And anyway, Christine was out that day. So I asked, I asked Cheryl to check, to do the research on this. And the problem is, is depending on how you look it up, the real estate is in a different name than the personal property. And although it's not required of these people to pay their personal property tax first, I ask them if they're willing to do so because it's more difficult to, to collect the personal property than it does the real estate. So anyway, when she looked it up, I think she was looking for real estate and there probably wasn't any payments made on that, but she didn't check the personal property. Now, it is my policy to ask people to do that, but they were under different names, so she could have missed it, okay? And I personally addressed and corrected this error as soon as it came to fruition. I answered and corrected the oversight immediately. I personally called Mr. Bergman and directed and extended my sincere apology and he graciously accepted my explanation. His license had not been, you know, not issued as a result of this as yet. Mr. Bergman had signed an agreement to pay his real estate tax. However, he amicably accepted our request to apply his payments to his outstanding personal property tax first. Personal property tax is more difficult to collect. We are allowed to place liens on the outstanding real estate tax, but not on the personal property. Therefore, if there's any default on the payment plan, the town can still foreclose and protect the town's asset until the property is sold. Mr. Bergman was a real gentleman and expressed his gratitude to the, to the town for allowing him to continue operating his business. I would like to add that upon taking office in June of 2013, there were many issues to be addressed in both the Collector's and Treasurer's office. And as a result of us being able to implement, as we talked earlier, the lockbox, we were able to set up these payment plans, which took a great deal of work.
Okay. And so, why did you set up, why did you set up the payment plans in that way?
Well, Mr., Mr., and I don't like to say the names, I don't have to, but this gentleman is in tax title. You know, he has a, he has a lien on his real estate property. And again, the lien protects the asset in the event that they default. Personal property, there are remedies to collect personal property, but they're not as stringent as a lien on some of the property. So that if I can get them to pay their personal property first, that's one less headache that the town has. And by establishing payment plans as we have, we not only have done a service for the taxpayers who are fortunate enough to have the resources to pay their taxes, we are also doing a service to those individuals who have suffered the outcome of a poor economy. The error that was made due to lack of perfection on my part, according to the Selectmen, because I didn't do the research. However, there was a backlog of work that needed to be addressed when I took office. And on that particular day, I was even more shorthanded because Christina was out. But I don't hold, I don't hold Mrs. Estrella, like I said, I gave you why, an example of how something like that could occur.
I'd like to direct your attention now to the health insurance open enrollment period point that Sadik makes in his letter.
Well, I, I vaguely remember this occurring, this occurring, and I remember we were, we were at some kind of deadline. Seems like when we, when we actually got notice, we were under pressure to get things And I remember that, I vaguely remember that we did this and that we had to rescind some information out to the retirees. But I take issue to the fact that, 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 that Mr. Sadik feels that I don't have a grasp of what goes on in my office with respect to the health insurance to our retirees or the employees for that matter. It's a lot of work. I worked very hard to learn everything I have about this. I spoke to you earlier about the implementation of Chapter 32B, which was adopted in 2008 by town meeting. And I explained that that's a portion of the health insurance which requires that the town retirees transfer from the active plan on our insurance to the retiree supplement at age 65. Again, it was adopted in 2008. It had not yet been adopted. Not adopting it has cost over $100,000 at least. $1,200 per month in penalties. And going forward, however, as I said earlier, a benefit, a reduction in health insurance premium of approximately $25,000 a year going forward. Now-
But let's talk about the open enrollment period that Mr. Sadik was making the point And do you recall speaking with Mr. Healy or with Mr. Sadik about the opener enrollment?
No, I don't. No, I do not.
Okay. Do you recall a letter that was sent out with a, to retirees marked urgent?
I don't remember the urgent in red, but I'm not saying it wasn't. It was a long time ago.
Okay. But would you recall a letter that was sent out to retirees regarding this issue?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay. Why was it sent out?
To have people enroll in this plan by a certain date. Or have a choice to enroll in one plan or the other by a certain date.
Okay. Were all retirees able to enroll by that certain date?
Yes.
And since, since December of 2014, has any Board of Selectmen, member of the Board of Selectmen or any, Mr. Healy approached you about this issue?
Not since it was placed.
Okay. And, and you haven't received any written warning about that since?
Absolutely not.
And, and how about the issue about the tax, the tax issue regarding Grandpa's Place and Main Street Auto? Since that occurred, have you received any written warnings or notification from any board member or the town administrator about that issue?
No, it was just something that we had to address. We fixed it and that was it. But no, not at all.
And by the way, this Exhibit 8, have you ever seen this document before the first hearing date? Were you ever presented?
From Monday, Monday, Friday?
Yes.
Yes, that was the first time.
Monday, this Monday, this past Monday? Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Sadik never gave you a copy of this beforehand?
No, absolutely not.
And nobody, Mr. Healy didn't or no one from, no one else from the town, right?
No, they did not.
Now, why don't you, another one of Mr. Sadik's concerns was a bank statement that was opened by someone in the office. Who normally opens bank statements?
Someone in the, well, usually it's Christina in the tax office that opens it or, sometimes a folder if I have help.
Do you recall an instance where Mr. Healy talked to you about a specific statement?
Yes.
And what statement was that?
This one.
Okay. And describe the, Mr. Healy's concerns.
Well, Mr. Healy came to my office and he said, can you tell me what this is all about? And I was shocked that he had this statement because I said, how did, how did you get this? And he said to me, oh, we, somebody opened it by accident and he brought it to us. And I said, really? And so-
What did you think of that explanation?
I didn't, I didn't, I, I, I was suspicious of the explanation.
Why?
Because the only, because there was an overdraft on the, on the, on the statement. And why would the town, why would somebody give that to the town administrator? When I'm the one that is in control and responsible for the town's bank accounts and only I?
And so, was there any problem with this account?
Well, as you said, he dressed it with me and I said, well, I was, I don't know, I sat down, I believe he came to my office. And then after I gave an explanation, I did, I think you asked me to shoot you an email about an explanation, I think I did. And what it was about is, we talked earlier about the abandoned property. There were two, the two vendor accounts, the two vendor and payroll accounts had several old checks that had not been cashed. And it was recommended by the last auditing firm that we opened, that we let that account run out and open two new vendor and payroll accounts. So that we could let all the checks run through. We had sent letters and we were pursuing, trying to get the balances down and trying to determine what was, what was, what was, sorry, what was actually due to people. We sent letters out to them.
Well, what was the advice that you received regarding the, the account that we're talking about here?
I was asked, what do you mean, as far as closing it?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, we had to let it run out first and try to get the balances down. Originally, we had, there was, again, between 25 and 30, over $30,000 in both the vendor and payroll account that had checks that were over two years old. And we were trying to reduce that. Once we reduce it, you can turn that money back into the general fund. So that was the purpose of doing that. But because, you know, I didn't know what my predecessor had done and she, it seemed like she had done the, some of these voided checks in batches. So it made it very difficult for us to determine what she had voided and what she didn't. And if you miss one, it's going to throw your account off. Plus the fact that the cash book we got in those accounts are supposed to be at zero balances at all times and they were not. And I addressed that with the, I addressed that with the outside auditors. And the only way to bring those balances back to zero is basically let those accounts run out, establish new accounts. And once we determined what had to be written off or there's, there's less than $1,000 based in those both accounts. Now, we made the bank aware of this. And they were monitoring those accounts so that if some checks came through and there wasn't enough to fund the account, as in this case, and went into overdraft, that they were going to notify me and I fund the account. Well, those, those statements are, those statements are generated, automatically generated every month. It's not like they, you know, they didn't pull it. But that's what was. It was an old account. It's not that I don't know, after almost two years, you would think, I know how to balance the accounts. I reconciled with the town accountant. The last month that I was working, February was balanced, March 3rd. So if I don't know how to transfer funds and maintain the account, I don't know how I would be able to balance the accounts monthly with the town accountant three days after the month closes.
And after discussing this with Mr. Healy, did Mr. Healy issue any, issue any warning?
No, he did not.
How about any Selectmen, any Selectmen issue a warning?
I never had discussion with the Selectmen about it.
And did you know that it would be a topic in evidence in this hearing before Monday?
No, I did not.
I'd like to talk to you about the next topic on Mr. Sadik's letter, and that's the disposition of town records. Mr. Sadik has the opinion, I believe, from this letter, that the treasurer, collector is responsible for ensuring that all documents are incinerated as, as you direct. What is the town's practice for disposing of records like the tax records that are at issue in this allegation?
Well, up to this incident, the maintenance man was destroying things that I gave him and asked him that, and told him that, you know, these, these need to be secure. If they were burnt, sometimes I had more than what I could put through the shredder in my office. So sometimes he would take them, but more often than not, we would shred them. It was only when we had a maximum, you know, more than we could handle, he would say, let me take these, I'll burn them for you.
Did he ever say that this was impractical for him to do?
No, he did not. He was very willing to do so.
Did he ever say that this was somehow against town procedure?
No, he did not.
All right. And so you gave documents to him?
But before I did that, I did address it with, I believe, the town administrator and possibly even the building inspector, I'm not sure. But I no addressed it with the half of the fact, but I definitely spoke to the town administrator about that. I believe I did anyway.
Prior to this incident?
Yes.
And what did Mr. Healy say?
No, it was a non-issue. Yeah.
Okay. And now, you agree that, well, were these records private?
Well, let me say this about that. As far as the disposal, I received a call from Mr. Healy on December 5th saying somebody had found those records in the station. I'm sorry, found those records? He, they, that they found some of those records at the transfer station when they were supposed to have been burned. And at that time, the conversation that I had with Mr. Healy was that, he asked me if I had derived, if I had derived the proper approval from the state to disregard, to discard of these, these tax bills. And I said, yes, I did. And I said to him, I will get you a copy of that form if you like. I said, but as far as them ending up in the town, the transfer station, I said, I was told that the maintenance department was going to burn them. He said, okay, fine. When, approximately a week or so later, I ran into the building inspector and I dressed it with him. And he said it wouldn't happen again. But I know we dressed this the other day. The bottom line is that these records are public record. All of the information on these tax bills are public information. If you go into the assessors module, any individual can go through the website and they can access all of this information, other than the calculation of the tax rate. But if you know the tax rate in your assessment and you multiply it by 1,000, you can come up with what's on that tax bill. Those records are also readily available in the assessors' office. If someone wants to come in and look at a commitment book, all that information is available to them as well.
And after, after that incident, did any Selectmen or Mr. Healy, you know, give you an issue, issue written warning or talk to you about this again?
No, no, I'm kidding.
Has the Board of Selectmen given you the budget to hire a shredding company?
No, I, I've never used one before. In my 20 years, I've never hired a shredding company. Even when I was in the city of Tottenham, I never did that.
I'd like to just touch briefly on an allegation that you provided wrong data to a newspaper. Was this discussed at a Board of Selectmen meeting?
That was at the hearing.
In April of 2014?
2014, yes, April 15.
And do you recall the incident?
Do I recall the incident?
With the newspaper, the request from the newspaper?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And what did the newspaper request?
I previously thought that the newspaper requested this data, and by, by annual, annual debt, requesting the calendar earnings. That's what most of the newspapers ask for. They ask for it by fiscal, they ask for it by fiscal year rather than calendar year.
And you're talking about the earnings of employees?
Yes.
Okay. And you had this experience in the past?
Absolutely.
You, how, so you've responded to such requests? You, how, so you've responded to such requests several times in the past?
Yes.
And, and what did you provide this, this newspaper?
I provided them with gross salary earnings, not of what's on here, federal holding data, that's not what was on there. I have a copy of the report, I believe. I don't know if I have it with me, but I, I have a report. I, it was gross earnings on the report, but it was run by calendar year rather than fiscal year. But this was not the issue that was raised. As a matter of fact, when this was addressed at the hearing, I didn't even know what they were talking about.
You hadn't received?
I was totally...
Well, you hadn't received notice though, had you?
No, no.
And you didn't hear any testimony about it at that meeting, did you?
Only what they told me.
And you weren't able to cross-examine anyone about it at that April two thousand fourteen hearing?
No.
And besides, and you've heard no verbal testimony about it at this hearing?
No.
The next point that Mr. Sadik notes here is training of employee, the clerk in the treasurer's office asked for training on the Harper's payroll system. Do you recall, or do you ever refusing training on Harper's payroll system?
No, I do not. She never asked me for training. I trained her.
Who's that?
I trained Jessica Thomas, the senior clerk, the new senior clerk.
How about Cheryl?
Who had the temporary charge.
How about Cheryl Estrella?
Uh, we did have one come, we did, we, we were both trying to get a handle on, on the payroll system at that time. And they do offer the service for free and they are wonderful. But both Cheryl and I experienced when they came in that day, by the time they got down to the nitty-gritty of what we needed to do, we were exhausted. They just gave us more detail that we needed, that was important to our particular town. And I knew the, I had learned the payroll well enough, I was confident enough, that I would train Jessica on the payroll. I spoon-fed that to her. I believe the week before I was put on leave was the first time she did the payroll on her own. But she was doing the payroll, you know, I mean, she did it. You know, I'd have her do a couple of departments, I'd do a couple of departments, show her how to balance. But she hadn't done one completely until the week before I was put on leave. And one of the things, may, maybe the reason why she's indicating this now is because she, she, she was bright, she picked up things quickly. And, but I asked her on more than several occasions, you need to take notes. And she kept telling me, I have a good memory. So I don't know if she needs help since I'm gone and that's why this is, where this is coming from. But she didn't take, you know, she started to, but it was like, are you going to take notes? Are you going to take notes?
And it's hard to know. You haven't heard from her about this issue, have you?
I'm not allowed to call the town.
Okay, um, the next point is, or two points down is that we're accessing access to other employee files, do you see that? I'm sorry, I'm skipping to the next page.
Skip page, okay. Yes, I remember this incident. Mm-hmm. I remember that being brought up.
Why, did, did you attempt to get the IT professional to put files in a shared folder for you to access?
Yes.
Okay, and why did you do that?
Well, Mrs., uh, well, it, it, it should be done. Because I don't have access to any of my employees' computers when they're not in, whether they're out sick or whatever. I don't have access and we don't have the same spreadsheets or anything else. So she had, she had files which I alluded to earlier with regard to the spreadsheets, health insurance, life insurance and all that, her files. And if she wasn't in, I couldn't access them if I wanted, if I had to do her job. And she had been telling me since, she had been telling me for months that she was going in for surgery. And I wanted to make sure that I could get the job done. And this somehow translated into me trying to, to, or it translated to me not knowing Excel to some degree because it was a confusion of what I understood and what I was asking for, I was bombarded with questions. But that was the bottom line. I have never worked in a community where a department head is not allowed to get on anybody's computer in the office, anybody's, to access information. What there should, what should there be on an employee's computer that a department head should not be allowed to see unless there's something that they shouldn't be doing?
How long have you used Excel for?
I started on Lotus in nineteen eighty-seven and then whenever it came available, I would use it.
I had the equipment.
But since then.
And you've, so you've used Excel for years?
Yes.
And you know how to use it?
Yes.
Okay. Now, there's a list here, Diane's Time Off. Have you ever seen this list before?
No, I have not.
Um, now they're dated April 2nd, April 3rd and so forth of two thousand fourteen. At any time, did Mr. Sadik or any other selectmen or Mr. Healy share this list with you?
Well, Mr. Healy wasn't there then, it was Richard Brown.
Did Mr. Brown?
No, he did not.
Did any selectmen?
No, they did not.
And prior to the April two thousand fourteen meeting, you were not given notice that this would be discussed at that meeting, did you?
No, I did not. Was not.
Okay, the next page is... I believe this, uh, appears to be emails from Mr. Sadik's collection or inbox. Do you recall this issue?
Yes, I do.
What issue was that, sir?
This is a, I'm referring to the Tuesday, June seventeenth, two thousand fourteen email from Monica Smigliani to Diane Wallace. Free, the subject is Free Town Retiree Drug Subsidy. Should be just a page or two after. Actually, just the next page in Exhibit Eight.
Thank you.
What is the MIA?
Oh, it's on this, one more thing. It's Mass Inter, I don't know how to say that word, Interlibrary Insurance Association.
Well, what do they do?
They are an agent for our health insurance. State front, please.
All right, and what is the, what is MMA? Who does, who does Monica work for?
She works for them, she works for my...
And...
This is something I...
Okay, now, in, did you work the week of June, June 12th of two thousand fourteen?
Yes. I know I took some time off, yes, I did. We have a, we have a two-week, I'm sorry, two-week pay period, or two-week, if you just, sorry. Two-week timesheet, you know, we get paid every, every two weeks.
All right, and, and were you, did you take a week off in this time period?
No, I didn't.
And, um, did your vacation at all interfere with your ability to handle this situation?
No. And we went back and forth, she, originally Monica had told me that I had to June 30th to do it and then it became imperative that I do that before that.
Well, what was it that Monica told you to do?
She wanted me to set up an account so that we could be reimbursed and retire the drug subsidy funds that I do to the town, and they do this on an annual basis. It's not going to, this is something that is going to be a one or two-time thing because we're no, they're no longer going to be offering this reimbursement because of the change in our health insurance.
And what did you understand the deadline to be for this?
Uh, I understood the lot, the deadline to be June 30th.
And did that turn out to be, was that accurate?
Well, then I was told that I needed to get it done before then. And then it became an issue for me to do it on June 18th. Which is the day that I was supposedly, I took a vacation, which sounds like I took a week's vacation, but actually I went in that day. I had had a root canal and I left early. I took vacation time, but I, you know, I took six hours off that day.
When did you, I'll show you a time record. Did you keep this time record?
Yes, I would keep, I wasn't allowed to turn in timesheets with the comp time that I had worked, so I kept a separate one for myself and my personal files.
Now, when you kept track of comp time, you were not expecting at this point to be compensated for, or to, to have time off for comp time, were you?
Absolutely not.
Okay, and what week is this the time record for?
Uh, it's for six fourteen to six twenty-seven.
So you did not submit this to the town? This particular?
This particular one, no. I used to make one without the comp time and one with the comp time.
When, when did you actually take, or have the root canal?
I think it was the day before, yeah, the day before.
What date is that?
Uh, six seventeen.
All right, and, and then what happened the next day?
Well, I went in and I wasn't feeling well, so, um, I, or, or I, I, no, that's not, I think what happened was is I anticipated that I was going to have a problem. And I said, I'm going to go in, but if it starts to bother me, I'm going to go home. I thought I had let Ally know, but she did not before me telling her.
And were you still taking painkillers on the eighteenth?
Uh, yes.
And was the time off that you took on the eighteenth related to the root canal?
Yes.
And were you, did you receive any emails or phone calls about this insurance issue on the eighteenth?
Yes.
And what did you do?
Well, I, I was upset because I said I wasn't feeling well, but I said, I decided to bypass Monica. She was going to help me, but I decided to get this done so I could relax the rest of the day. And I called the health desk and I did what needed to be done and it got done that day.
And you did that from home?
I did that from home.
During the vacation time?
Yes.
And you didn't change your timesheet to reflect the time that you spent on it at home?
No, because I'm not allowed to put it from home.
This time record is a little routine. Is the amount of comp time on this time record, is that a typical week, typical amount of comp time?
Yeah, it depends, it depends what's going on. Nothing's typical, depends what comes up. But this particular week, I had, I had, um, I got on here to the presentation, selectmen's meeting. Something like that, and what happened was there...
After June of two thousand fourteen, did you ever receive a reprimand or a written warning about this issue?
Never.
Did anyone talk to you about it verbally after it was resolved?
No.
And prior to this hearing, were you given notice that this would be a topic, that there'd be evidence about this in this proceeding?
No, I did not.
Now, at some point, did you... Mr. Chairman, may we take a five-minute break?
Yes. Five-minute recess from the meeting.
You mentioned earlier that Cheryl Estrella replaced Mr. Santos.
Mm-hmm, yes, I did.
Now, did, did Ms. Estrella have any experience in the municipal, municipality?
Um, she did not work in a treasurer collector's office. I know she worked for, I believe, in Flow River in some capacity, but not, nothing in finance.
Um, and did you, did she require training in her job?
Yeah.
And what training did you provide her?
Well, anything that I could offer, my past experience that I, you know, alluded to today as tax collector. I shared everything I possibly could because I wanted, I wanted the office to run as well as it possibly could in my absence. So I didn't hold back any information whatsoever. We've got to the, both the treasurer's side or the collector's side, which we got the clerk's position and the collection of taxes.
And did Ms. Estrella meet you or needs and expectations as a worker?
Yes, yes.
And did you, what did you think of her, the amount that she was being paid?
Well, I, I addressed this and I can't remember, pardon me, I'm not sure if it was Mr. Sadik, we had a conversation over it or if I had a conversation with the town administrator. But I sincerely felt and still do that the senior clerk, if it need be called back, or the position needs to be changed. But the salary, starting salary for that position for the amount of responsibility involved in payroll and the benefits alone should substantiate a higher salary than what it's currently being paid. That was my feeling back then and I feel that right now.
Now, in Exhibit Nine, Ms. Estrella writes that she was there to help you out. Now, obviously she worked for you.
Right.
And, and was she unbalanced and able a system?
Say that again?
Was she unbalanced and able the system?
Yes, yes, she was in, in the beginning, yes, she was. I wouldn't have, I would have been looking to increase her salary if I didn't believe that.
Now, she writes in this letter, April 3rd, two thousand five, email to Ally Golds that you were socializing on the phone all day long and shopping online for beads. Is that true?
No, that's not true.
And has anyone ever, Mr. Healy or any board member ever talked to you about wasting municipal time or wasting the town's time in that fashion?
Well, as I alluded to earlier, I put in a lot of additional hours. No, no one's alluded to me. As a matter of fact, I've been told not to work the hours that I want to work.
And, um, in fact, your contract refers to that, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
And what does it say in your contract?
I don't know if it's related, but...
What is the gist of it?
The gist of it says that it's my responsibility as the treasurer collector to work as many hours, nights, weekends, whatever's necessary for me to get the job done.
Now, at the bottom of Page One of Exhibit Nine... Now, at the bottom of page one of exhibit nine, Ms. Estrella alleges that you badgered Christina Jus- Jusame and screamed at her in front of employees and residents. What's your reaction to that?
Well, what is my reaction to that? I don't believe I'm a screamer. I believe that my voice does carry. However, Mrs. Estrella would at least in the last two years, on average, a minimum of once, twice a week, say to me, "Diane, you need to go over to the tax collector's office." Because she was concerned that Mrs. Jusame was not appropriately addressing the taxpayers' issue. She has even told me on more than one occasion that I should write Mrs. Jusame up.
Now, when Ms. Estrella was the assistant, your, the clerk, is it senior clerk? Was she the only one in your office who could see, who was in your office?
Yes.
And she was the only one with information about your whereabouts?
Yeah, for the most part, almost, you know, I, I tried to tell them where I was going when I left the office.
In the middle of page two of exhibit nine, there's a paragraph that begins, "I clearly remember," do you see that? And she says that she saw you point the, she alleges that she saw you point a finger in the face of a retiree and spouse. Do you recall this incident?
No, I'm not a finger pointer.
Do you recall speaking with a retiree and a spouse in the hallway?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
And what occurred?
These, these are nice people. They have a disabled son and...
Can we agree on one thing? I'm becoming very uncomfortable with the amount of medical information that's being talked about here. We've had references to employee situations and now we're referencing to a, apparently a minor child. Could I ask that we refrain from doing that?
That's fine. I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm not using names or anything.
I don't want to get into an argument with you, ma'am, just I'm very uncomfortable with the amount...
Just let me know if I say something that's...
I'll let your counsel help me.
So I just, we need to be able to respond to the allegations in the exhibit. So this is an allegation in an exhibit that you introduced. You did not redact it.
Is there an allegation of a medical condition here that I missed?
No.
No, I was using it to, to, to what? Infer to the plan.
Yeah, you have consistently throughout this hearing raised employee medical conditions, which are private, and now you're raising a citizen medical condition, which is private. And I would ask your lawyer to instruct you that that's improper.
Mr. Jenkins, I don't think it's appropriate for you to raise your voice at my client or to talk to my client at all.
I was talking to you, sir. Can you agree that we're not going to be discussing citizens' medical conditions here?
Yes, I think that that's fine, so long as it doesn't impair our ability to respond to the town's allegations.
I don't think there's any reason necessary to discuss anybody's medical condition. That's private information.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to do that. I was trying to allude to the how, what...
I understand, Diane, but the deal is, this isn't a place...
All right, that's fine. Just let me know. I'm happy to comply. This, this particular individual, we received a phone call from Maya, from the representative, and this had to do, and that's the only reason why I brought it up, as to the reason why they had to apply for Medicare Part D. And they did not want to do so. And Matt Johnson from Maya stated to me that if they do not apply, that their health insurance was going to be discontinued. And this is just not true. I know who these people are. I don't have a problem with them. I was, there was a situation where I didn't know when I could bring somebody in my office to speak or not to speak. I have no privacy, so I felt uncomfortable myself having to address this issue in the hallway. But this is absolutely not true. I did speak with them. They did comply eventually. It took several, several meanings to, to effectuate what we needed to get done so that their insurance was not terminated.
Are you aware of these citizens ever complaining to the town about the way you treated them?
No.
Has Mr. Healy or did Mr. Brown or has any select person talked to you about the way you treated these individuals?
These people here?
Yes.
No.
Okay, now, in the bottom of the page, there's reference to bulletproof glass. She says that you were hiding around a corner at your desk. What do you, how do you react to that allegation?
I don't hide around the corner of my desk. I, when I first was employed, the two desks in the office were basically together in, in line of the window. And I had the office restructured so that I could have somewhat privacy. I situated it so that I could lean over and see if there was anybody at the window, either in order to service the window, if either the clerk was busy or what have you. But it's not like I can't be seen from, if somebody's walking by the window, that I can't be seen.
And have you heard any testimony in this hearing that you were somehow inefficient or wasting the town's time or money in the course of your professional day?
No, I have not.
And have you received any warning from Mr. Healy or any selectmen that you, you are working inefficiently or not executing the duties of your job in an efficient way?
No, we've had a relatively very congenial association.
Now, the next page of exhibit nine, the second full paragraph down begins, "The First Few Months of Employment," do you see that?
Yep.
And she talks about Mr. Lawless, your husband, being in the office. Now, she is the only one who witnessed, who went into your office on a, on a regular basis, right?
Well, whoever, whoever was in the town hall, the tax collector, the assistant collector, the secretary of court.
Okay, and has Ms., did Ms. Estrella ever, ever talk to you about being uncomfortable about Mr. Lawless's visits to your office?
No, she did not.
Now, she writes that she had mastered her job. She had mastered all the tasks given to her. And that she would pass these off to Mr. Brown or the Board of Selectmen as your, as your work. Have you ever heard of this allegation before reading this document, after receiving this document in the course of this hearing?
No, I have not.
Have you ever passed off her work as your own?
No, I have not. But, you know, in that, I, I certainly don't feel, whoever does this spreadsheet that I, you know, or a document that does types of letters that I have to, if they want to put their initials on it, that's fine. But I don't feel as though I have to say so and so in this, I mean, routine.
Now, in March of 2014, at the bottom of page four of exhibit nine, I'd like to direct your attention to that section. There was a... Page four. There's a, an on-call fighter, an on-call firefighter who hadn't signed up for a direct deposit and the town was holding his paycheck.
I'd like to speak about that. That came up at the hearing as well, and that was very confusing.
In April of 2015?
Yes.
Excuse me, 2014?
That came up at the hearing and again...
Prior, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but prior to the hearing in April of 2014, were you given notice that this issue would come up as a topic of conversation in that meeting or hearing?
No, I was not.
Okay, and what do you recall about this incident?
Well, I recall trying to figure out what exactly they were referring to because I didn't have any notice. And this was towards the end of the hearing and I was, this, this interrogation went on for two and a half hours, I think. And what, what I knew, what I understood and what I got from it, this is what I understood, but I don't think I made my point and I don't think that was your fault. I think that was my fault because you raised that issue. But what had happened was, we had warned that there were some call firefighter checks that had stayed in the desk over at the fire department in the clerk's desk. She would hold the, some firefighters wanted, I guess she held them there and they came to pick them up. But what, and she thought they were stubs, that, she didn't do that on purpose. She thought they weren't checks. She thought they were stubs. So anyway, when we started pursuing these abandoned checks and sending people letters, we found out that there were checks in the drawer at the fire department that were abandoned checks because they never got mailed. Okay, so, and, and Cheryl, you know, wanted to, you know, get everybody on direct deposit work. I thought it was a good idea. We did talk to the town administrator. He did tell me, you know, certain contracts don't, you know, you can't make them do that, which is fine. But it's cheaper for the town. It's easier for everybody. They don't have to worry about getting their money. And so we generated a letter and we sent it out and it was agreed between the fire department and with the fire chief and myself and Cheryl that the call fire checks would stay at our office for at least a week, hopes that they would pick them up. And if they did, and we'd ask them if they wanted to go direct deposit. We knew we couldn't, you know, hold them to that because that's not in their contract and then mail them out and at least we knew they weren't sitting in the desk somewhere. That's what that was all about. That's it.
And you haven't heard any testimony from the fire, the fire chief about this issue at this hearing or any other Board of Selectmen meeting, have you?
No, and, and I did allude to that in the hearing that, you know, the fire chief had no problem with it. I do, I do understand where you came from, you got a complaint, but I would have been happy to answer your question if you had called me. I understand it's like to be an elected official. I was one. And it hurts when somebody comes after you and you don't know the answer. But I was always more than willing to answer any of your questions with respect to that matter. And I know what's, that, that's what happened.
Just for the, just for the purposes of the record, I'd just like to note that in, when you say "you" in this instance, when you're describing this issue, you're talking about Ms. Pacheco or Selectmen Pacheco?
Well, she's the one that raised the issue. And I, I know I didn't explain myself well. I, I was like at the point where I was...
Okay, and since, have you heard any criticism or warning about this issue from Mr. Healy or any selectmen?
No.
The next page is five and I'd like to ask you about, she says that you asked for her passwords and she refused to give them because she was always told never to give out passwords. Do you recall this?
Well, I think it was more that I, the statement I made earlier, I have never worked for a town that the treasurer, collector, I mean, when I was in Taunton, we had six people. We used to be able to get on and look at everybody's, you know, you know, spreadsheets, whatever. There was never an issue about doing that. Here it's like, oh, somebody's password, it's like a, you know. I, that, that's always been my experience in all the communities I went. This is the first time that I've experienced the, the major deal with pass, you know, as far as giving out some assistance, looking at documents. That's my faith, that's my first experience at that. And again, it's because, and I didn't have the shared file at the time, I wanted to be able to do my job if someone was out. And I couldn't see those spreadsheets that had to do with the operation of the office.
And you agree with Ms. Estrella that she was instructed to never give out her passwords?
Yes.
Now, she says that you emailed documents from her computer to yourself from her computer. Is that true?
Yeah, I did at one point. I had a conversation with, I didn't do this without the town administrator's approval. Yes, I did.
And which town administrator approved it?
Jackie.
And obviously that was to conduct the business of the town.
Yes, looking for some information.
Now, did Ms. Estrella ever attend meetings that you would have attended had you not been on vacation or out sick?
Or in town business. Yes, that was a major issue of contention with respect to my trying to keep my hands in, in the jobs and what the duties and responsibilities that Cheryl had taken on. And I have notes on that, I'll hold you out.
Take your time.
Give me one second.
Who's that?
Who was that about? The meetings, the meetings, the meetings.
Meetings when you were absent.
Well, I'll just try to speak it off, off the cuff as well as I can. Let me say that in November of 2013, I had, I had scheduled and again identified the administrative assistant that I was going to a meeting on town business. Subsequently, on that same day, there was another meeting scheduled that I should have attended that was related to my office or that I should be at. Okay, it's a coincidence. December, February, at least two or three meetings, the same thing happened. One of them, Mr. Sadek was here, was a website meeting. I was scheduled to go to the meeting. I had already paid for my meeting. I was scheduled to go to that meeting and now I get notified that we're having a website training. So I brought Cheryl with me so that she could take notes and I wouldn't miss anything and I stayed for part of the meeting and then I had to go to the other meeting. Okay, so that happened like three or four times. You know, I was suspicious. I have to tell you, I was suspicious. I gave the administrator's office approximately a month's notice prior to my taking, that I was going to take a trip to Florida, so I was going to definitely out of town and not be able to attend meetings. I did it by email. And I did this, let's say, the end of February because I had tickets and, and on March 6th, I received an email that there was going to be an insurance advisory meeting... 6th, I received an email that there was going to be an insurance advisory meeting held. The annual meeting where we discuss changes in the plans and rates and calculations and everything else, okay? And again, I had scheduled my vacation from March 12th to the 20th. I get notification that this meeting's being scheduled for the 13th of March. I email Ally, I said, I sent you, I sent you an email, and I got a copy of all that, you know, with me, you know, in the future if you need it. And I asked, I said, listen, I, I know if I do, that I was taking a vacation, can you please reschedule this meeting? It's pertinent that I be there. I was just told that it was being held. I, you know, I mean, you would think, I'm the administrator of the health insurance, that I would be contacted before you scheduled a health insurance advisory meeting. But I was.
And did she inform you that, did anybody inform you before, during, or after your vacation that she had attended that meeting in your stead?
No, they did not. So anyway, I asked for it to be switched. I was denied, and I got an email back saying, we just wanted to let you know. Well, I wasn't happy about that, but I certainly couldn't change my plane trip. So, I went to the, I went on my trip. I came back, I think it was on a Friday. I didn't really have a chance to address what had transpired at this meeting. But that following Monday, I was scheduled to come before the Board of Selectmen. I don't remember for what, but I was scheduled to come before the board. Could have been the budget, beginning of the budget, I don't know. But I was sitting for the whole evening before my, and the issue came up of the changes being made at this health insurance advisory meeting. I went back the next morning, and I said to Mrs. Estrella, oh, I heard that there's going to be changes in the plan, blah, blah, blah. And she looked at me, she goes, oh, I know all about it. I was invited to the meeting by Mr. Sadig. And I said to her, I said, and you didn't seem, and you didn't think it was pertinent that you informed me of this? Or even, she didn't even offer to give me any information regarding that meeting. So I went to the town administrator, and at this point, I said to him, I said, do you have any documents? He said to me, ask Cheryl, she's got all the information. And I was a little put off, being the department head and the administrator of the health insurance, that I had to pull teeth to get this information out of someone. Then I, so I said to him, I said, why is it, and you're not going to like this, maybe he, he made this up, maybe he didn't. But I said, why is it every meeting that I am scheduled to be out of town, and in this particular instance, I'm going to be on vacation, that a meeting is subsequently scheduled, and I'm notified that I should be here at the town hall? It made me look incompetent, and that I was never around for these meetings. His answer to me was, perhaps it's because Mr. Sadig doesn't see any value in you attending these meetings. And that's the answer I got. So he confirmed to me that this was being done deliberately.
Okay. Now, were you, eventually, Mrs. Estrella moved out of your office.
Yes.
And were you involved? Did you ask for her to be moved out of your office?
No.
Now, as I believe, she worked in your office until the very end of 2014. Is that correct?
Yes, December 29th was the last day.
Okay. And what happened on December 29th with regard to payroll deductions?
Well, I think we have to go where she was, I think I have to say something about how she was hired for the position in the town clerk's office. It's important. Mrs. Estrella applied for the position. I expected it, because she was very close to the assistant town clerk. I expected it, town wants, I was trying to pay myself in the wind as much as I, before she transferred over there. The day of the interview...
I'm sorry, you're talking about the interview to the, her new position?
Yes, to her new position. The day, well, after she was, after she got the job, she said this to me. She said, I tried to pull out of the interview. On the day of the interview, I sent Ally an email.
Who was this, please?
Cheryl Estrella. She sent Ally an email, she told me, asked, saying that she wanted to back out. She said, but Ally had gone home early, and she never got the message. So she went on the interview. The ne, very next day, Jack came into the office. I didn't know anything about it, you know, what's going on, because I wasn't even consulted about that. But anyway, Jack came in, he said, congratulations, Cheryl, you got the job. And I said, congratulations, Cheryl, you got the job. After Mr. Healy left, she said to me, gee, they didn't even ask me if I wanted it. And I found that a little strange. I mean, to read this documentation, it's just...
Okay. So, what, did Mrs. Estrella have a role in doing payroll deductions for town employees?
Yes, in solving the problem.
Okay. What was her role?
Well, pretty much everything. I, I tried to do it with her. We tried to double check, but basically, entering the payroll, balancing the payroll, managing the deductions, any kind of changes that had to do with employee benefits, health insurance, life insurance, dental, everything, soup to nuts.
And, and did you notice an irregularity in the payrolls?
Well, what happened was, about a month after Mrs. Estrella, or within a few weeks, because that was the end of the month, so we cut a check to the retirement board at the end of each month. And we send them a detail of what we deducted, and they audit to make sure that we do the nine percent, two percent, seven percent, whatever needs to be done. They audit all that. And they let us know if something's not quoted properly, if properly, if we didn't take the right information. Anyway, I got a call, and I was told that there was a problem with a particular individual's deduction. And I said, real? And so, I said, I said, okay, I'll check it out, and what have you, and I called payroll, and I ran, they, they showed me, you know, there's certain reports that you can check all this stuff. And lo and behold, all the changes, I wasn't in that day, I was upset. On December 29th, it has her name on it, the time and everything, there was a payroll deduction on somebody's retirement, retirement board, retirement deduction, that was changed from nine to four percent. Now, there was no, there was no other changes made in that person's account on that day. And I'm not saying, I'm not telling you that it was done on purpose, but it did feel questionable to me, when there was no other changes to be in that person's profile. I even double checked to see if I had done it by mistake, to see if I had gone in on, on her, you know, like if she had started the payroll, and it was already up there, that, you know, would come under her, and I did it. And they told me, no, that wasn't possible when the changes were being done. So this was done on December 29th.
By Mrs. Estrella?
By Mrs. Estrella, on the last day in the office.
And did she have acquaintance with the person that the deduction was changed?
Yes, she was, yeah. I don't know if that had anything to do with it, but yes.
Okay. So, Ms. Thomas is hired soon after. Is that right?
Say that again.
Ms. Thomas is hired?
Yes.
Oh, would you recall when she was hired?
She was hired on January 26th.
And...
2015.
To replace Mrs. Estrella?
Yes.
And how did you find her contributions to the department to be, when she joined?
She's an intelligent girl. She's intelligent. She was adapting. She was adapting pretty well. She had no prior municipal experience. I had been doing the clerk's job since Mrs. Estrella left. I did get some help, but the floaters aren't always, you know, they're somewhat trained, some of them are trained, but they, they can't do payroll and all that kind of thing. So, basically, I just trained her to do payroll and the accounts receivable. That was going to be her main function. I don't know, I don't remember how far we got into, I think it was teaching her the bills that I said that had to be audited. But, yeah, like I said, the only issue that I had at that time was, you know, her, you're not taking any notes. That was it.
Now, in between Mrs. Estrella and Ms. Thomas being hired, you had no help in the office?
Occasionally, but little.
And you asked Mr. Healy for help, didn't you?
Yes, I asked. Well, I asked Mr. Healy for help, and he would give it to me when it was possible, when there's a floater available. But on there, on that occasion, and a prior occasion when I shorthanded, I asked to work, come into work, work weekends or what have you. And I was told that I, I needed to make, I went in anyway, but he kind of, you know, like he, he knew that, he, he told me that he knew the Board of Selectmen did not want me to be on normal working hours. And I found that very difficult, especially in November, when both Mrs. Estrella and Mrs. Christina Jussein had taken a vacation. I was eighty man hours short in, in a three-week period of time. And when I requested to come in, I was told I needed to make, to maintain normal working hours. And, and I asked again, January 26th, I had been alone in the office for an entire month, having a floater here and there, and even on one day that I was granted the floater, Mrs. Jussein claimed to be overwhelmed in the tax office, even though we had taken fifty percent of the workload out. I let Isabel go over to the collector's office to help her rather than help me.
Excuse me. Mr. Buer, Ms. Lawless, and Mr. Jenkins. And our last meeting, which suggested that Ms. Lawless's testimony was going to take about an hour. Based on that, some of the people around this table made appointments this afternoon that we can't move. It's obvious that with the amount of work that's left, and the testimony that's left, and your closing statement, Mr. Jenkins' closing statement, and the board, we're never going to be able to finish our workload in a reasonable time for us to make our appointments. So, could we somehow reach an agreement as to another date to finish this?
Hi, Mr. Karen. My estimate, I swear to you, was in good faith.
I believe you.
Well, I'll agree with him.
I agree.
Mr. Jenkins knows where I'm from, or he should bring it in.
I get it. But obviously, we based our main year of our date. I made some appointments, and I'm sorry, but I, I just can't.
As did I.
Jack has some, so my dead drop dead time is one o'clock to leave. If you'd like to pursue for another half an hour or so, and, but Jack has to leave now. So, I think so. Mr. Jenkins, he has to, he has to be here. So, I guess at this point, maybe we should agree on a time to reconvene. Does that seem reasonable to you, gentlemen? And Diane, please?
Yes.
Can I go now, before I understand?
Could we look at our calendar? See what we can look at?
Not Monday.
Mondays are thirty, around three.
Not Monday.
We have a very full plate of Monday.
Do you want this on the record? Do you want me to stay on the record?
I don't think it needs to be on the record. But I may have something for the record.
Yeah, no, I'm not going to leave. I just didn't know if you wanted to put all that conversation on scheduling.
So, thank you.
Around seventeen, eighteen, nineteen?
I don't want the nineteenth. I don't know the Friday.
Afternoon.
Seventeenth, it's fine with me.
Afternoon of the sixteenth, maybe, to the seventeenth, eighteenth.
The sixteenth, you got, you got a luncheon here on the sixteenth, so it can't be the sixteenth.
And what day couldn't you make it, Mr. Sadig?
Well, I don't want the nineteenth. The seventeenth, I have...
Seventeen, eighteen?
Seventeenth, I have a meeting that night. Okay? And so I have to be at that meeting around seven.
Mr. Jenkins?
Seventeen, anytime would be fine.
Mr. Buer?
The seventeenth is tough, because, sorry, eighteen and nineteen are impossible.
We've got to be able to wrap it up for the next meeting, because I'm out of here in 2014.
Did you say not the sixteen?
The sixteenth, they have a luncheon here at, at eleven thirty.
What time are they done?
Two, four.
Two, two.
Yeah, because I really, everybody here, this is really, a really extremely busy time for me, so I can't even leave work until two thirty, the earliest.
About three o'clock. Three o'clock on the sixteenth.
Three o'clock on the sixteenth.
Mr. Lawless?
I, I don't have to tell them what time it is, so. But what day? It's a Tuesday.
Yeah, it's Thursday, you can't do it. It's a Tuesday.
Next, next, it's next Tuesday.
I can't do it?
Wednesday you can. Thursday.
It's next Tuesday. Okay.
Three o'clock. That's what we're doing, Tuesday at three.
It's Tuesday, three. Tuesday at three. Okay. Can I repeat, Mr. Jenkins?
No, but I will.
Can I just introduce an exhibit?
You want to be back on record now?
Yes.
Do you want to proceed for another half an hour?
No.
No?
He said no, because Jack...
Can I just introduce an exhibit, just to get it off my place? Okay, this is just emails and letters from Ms. Lawless to Mr. Healy regarding some of the issues we discussed today.
My best work.
I have two copies, but I can get them out of this.
What number is that, Ally?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Nineteen? So we, we only have two copies, Mr. Jenkins?
Well, we can try to do this to give, to give everybody a copy, so that we're able to study it.
I can return next week with copies, or...
Please, please.
Ally can scan it and send it to me.
No. Okay, we, I'll make it work.
Okay, thank you.
I did this.
Do you want any files?
No.
Is this one being...
This is just going to be, that will be exhibit number nineteen, and then there'd be a motion to continue the hearing until Tuesday, the sixteenth, at three P.M. And Ally will, you post a notice today?
Tuesday?
Tuesday, the sixteenth.
What, what was it?
Question made, whatever they can't do. Can we still rule out the, Tuesday to sixteenth?
Well, on a continued hearing, I don't believe you need a, need a red notice, but we're trying to have adults and suspenders, so. I know, but I'm trying to be extra careful, Mr. Lawless.
Okay.
Also?
Do you want a motion? Motion?
I made a motion.
Motion to continue until...
I did, I made that motion.
Until, the motion, the second, to continue Tuesday, June sixteenth, at three.